Could I ask everyone to kindly take their seats, start making your way, we'll get started on time tonight.
Fathers, we stop and pause to say thank you that you love us enough that you sent your son to give his life and show us grace and mercy, that he did become flesh and dwell among us and we beheld his glory, the glory of the only begotten son of God full of grace and truth. And we thank you, Lord, for that, and we thank you for the greatest nation in the history of the world that you have blessed us beyond anything we deserve. And Lord, we just pray that you will continue to do so. And Lord, we need your mercy during this time, this epidemic. We need your healing and we need your wisdom. And I thank you for these men and women here tonight that give of their time to serve in the city and to serve their country. And Lord, we just want to give you all the praise and all the honor. In Jesus's name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, folks, I'll call the regular meeting of the Destin City Council, December 7th, 2020. To order first up is a general approval. I have a motion to approve in a second. Is there any, see no discussion? The agenda will be approved as established. Can I just ask if there's any opposition and just to speed things up or we can vote if you, it doesn't matter. Go ahead and vote. Advice from the city attorney, which I value greatly, so we'll take it to a vote. Teresa, keep pushing. We're having technical, see my, 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 my thing was, I was stealing that from another chairman. With no opposition, speed up the process and I.
I'm doing it.
She, she can't push that thing any harder without breaking it. Hit confirm. And the vote is unanimous, so moved. Forty-eight seconds later. Item one, approval of the minutes of the November 16th, 2020, regular city council meeting.
I'll vote to do that soon.
Second, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, let me clear. Take a vote. There you go, ladies and gentlemen. Now it's Kevin's turn to push the button fifteen times. There we go. Eyes have it, so moved. Item 1B, approval of the minutes, October 6th, 2020, special city council meeting.
I'll make that motion there.
Second.
And a second. Any comments? Seeing none? Technology. Eyes have it, vote is unanimous, so moved. Item 2A, Noriega Point Phase 3 Improvement Update, sir. We have our representative from FDEP online, James.
Hello, can you hear me? We have Pierce Barrett from FDEP. He's the project manager for Noriega, Noriega Point Park Improvements, and he's going to give us an update on Phase 3.
Go ahead, Pierce.
Yes, good evening. I hope all of you are doing well. I apologize if I don't, this is the first time I've done one of these not being in person. So hopefully in the near future, next update will be in person and not in distance. But anyway, also like to offer my congratulations to the new council members, and I look forward to meeting all of you in person in the near future. Right now, the Noriega Point last phase, we call it the recreational phase, is ready to be put on the street, so to speak, for bids, with the exception of having it reviewed by your city building department, which the plans and specifications will be submitted this week for review. With that being said, we hope then to be able to put it out on the street in, right after the turn of the year in January, and receive the bids on the project in February, and then issue a notice to proceed in April with completion of the project in the next nine months, which would be December of 2021. The project has not changed since the original, well, basically the sixty percent plans that were presented, and then the ninety percent plans, I think was the last time we had a presentation. And then we had to wait to go through a strenuous process of getting a permit from DEP for the coastal construction line or CCCL permit. What you have up on the screen in front of you right now is just for your information, especially those of you new on the council that may not be real familiar with the project. The lower, to me, lower left-hand picture is what Noriega Point looked like before we started the stabilization project. And the other picture next to it is the completion of the stabilization project. You can see there's quite a bit of additional acreage that was added to the point. You can see two more embayments that weren't there, swimming embayments on the inlet side, which weren't there when we started the project. And also the sand structure, which is called a dike now because of the permitting process, is quite, is considerably a lot more extensive than it was. You can see all the stabilization that went in in the first phase of the project, which was all that armament around the point. And then the T-groins that are guarding, so to speak, the embayments on the inlet side. James, if I can get you to go to the next slides, hopefully that you received. This is what the project, there he is, this is what the project now, what we call Phase 3. Phase 1 was the stabilization, Phase 2 is the vegetation of the sand structure, and Phase 3 now, Phase 2 rather, and Phase 3 now is the recreational phase. And I just want to emphasize the importance of the recreational phase. Without this phase of the project or these structures going in, this project would not have become a NERTA project funded under the BP early restoration. So this project will include, as was presented earlier in the conceptual, all the way up through sixty and ninety percent plans, includes the boardwalk that you see running along the harbor, entire harbor side of the point. It goes out all the way to the tip. That is an ADA accessible structure in which anyone of various ability can be able to traverse that boardwalk. The other portions of the project, and I want to emphasize the ADA portion. This project was made to be as, as best as could be ADA accessible. That's one of the big things about the project was allowing people of limited physical ability to now enjoy the point as well as those of a hundred percent capability. The project includes an ADA accessible restroom facility that has a women's, a men's, and a family section to it. It also includes by, access boardwalk down to the first embayment, and then a pavilion off to the north, which is for persons that may not want to enjoy the waterfront portion of the project, but be able to enjoy the, the visual views that are offered from Noriega Point. I'll show you some general pictures of these in just a little bit. There's also three dune crossover or boardwalk structures that you can see along the point. These are included as alternate bid items in the project, and that's only because of the limitation possibility of funding. But there's three of them right now proposed, and we intend, hopefully, to be able to build all three of them. They, they are not ADA accessible, I want to point that out. That was not physically possible to build those structures because of the heights of that sand structure. But they will be accessible for others, and there is a out point on the very top of those structures where benches are provided to people to enjoy the views, both harbor side and inlet side from the, from the point. The, as I said, those are alternates. So you may ask, what was changed between ninety percent and now? The only thing that was changed, and we hold the percentage one hundred percent out until we go through all the permits, and all permits are now received on the project from the states. Both our coastal construction control line permit, any other permits we had. That was the primary permit we had to obtain, and that was quite a task, and I congratulate our consultants for ma- managing to work with the department and get this permit obtained. What, what was changed from the, the last set of plans you saw was only the fact that the boardwalk access that goes to the first embayment, and that's that half-moon looking cut into the point, that's the swimming area. That area is primarily intended to be for those with limited physical access because of its closeness. That, that was, we had to reduce the boardwalk itself in size a small amount. We had to reduce its width. The department was objecting to the original size, which is twelve foot wide, and we reduced it back to eight foot wide, which is still a sufficient structure for allowance for people to pass each other, say in wheelchairs or other types of mobility. Normal ADA sidewalk, for example, is five feet wide. We also reduced the length of the Moby mat that was originally proposed to go all the way down to the swimming embayment. The department requested we reduce that back to fifty feet off the end of the boardwalk. Moby mat, by the way, if you're not familiar, is a flexible mat that is allowed to be laid on top of the sand, which allows those in wheelchairs or other type vehicles to have access over that soft sand. And they're, that mat is typically rolled up and put away when you know there's a storm approaching the coast. And right now, like I said, the schedule is, once we get past the building department, which hopefully will not have too many comments, then we will put the plans on the street and put it out to bid. So that's the status at this point. And if you have any questions, well, let me move on to a couple more slides real quickly, just to show those that are new on the council. This is a, a picture of the point again, that shows some of the, where the vegetation is and other items. James, if you go to the next slide. That is an elevation of the restroom facility. As you can see, it's an extensive facility. If you look at the east side elevation, that shows the ramping that's required to be able to access this facility to meet ADA standards. Some of the last things that will be done is, of course, when these, this facility is beginning to be constructive, this contractor will submit various paint schemes and things like that, that the council will have a last vote on to determine what colors they want. Right now, all colors are proposed for blending into the, the dune or dike itself, so that it's not a standout structure, paint-wise or, or color-wise. Go to the next one, please, James. And that's a elevation view of the pavilion, which is shown on the site plan. It's a simple structure to provide shade protection, et cetera. And I believe that's basically the slides I had to show you. There will be a complete set of plans available at City Hall. They'll be provided to your staff, and they'll be able to print out a set and have it if you want to look at the plans in detail. There's quite a few sheets in these plans, so, but if anyone should have some questions on the plans, once you view them, please feel free to contact me, and I'll be glad to help walk you through them and any questions you may have. Hopefully, we'll be able to come back in, in February at the latest and give you the notice of award and what the project's budget will be and, and so forth. So I'm willing to entertain any questions that the council may have at this time.
I have a couple, or at least one anyways, Doc, or I do have a couple, so Dr. Ramswell, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Barrett. We appreciate you being here, even if it is virtually. It's very insightful. Thanks. A couple of questions for you. What percent plans are these that you're showing us?
Well, and I know percentage is confusing, Dr. Ramswell, when we say something. We said ninety originally, and then now we're saying ninety-five, and we're holding that last five percent. What, what we did is when we submit for permits, good design practice is to call your plans when you finish your designs, and your details are done, your notes are finished, but you, you reserve a percentage, whether it may be hypothetical, but you reserve a percentage of completion when you send it in for permitting, because you could have some changes that are occurred during the permitting, and which we did. So that was what I discussed earlier. We, we had to change the width on the boardwalk structure, the ADA boardwalk structure to the beach, and we had to reduce the, the length of the Moby mat. But otherwise, the components of the project have not changed, and the general design parameters and everything else are all the same. I'm saying ninety-five now because if we send it into your building department, and they have some questions or things that require changes on the plans or additions to the plans, then we would add that to it. Otherwise, if there's no, no changes that occurred during the building department review, then the plans that you see now at a hundred percent, at ninety-five, will be the same as a hundred.
Okay, thanks. I was just curious, because I know the DEP website, back on September the 8th, they actually had a certified filed copy of the ninety-five percent plans that we had not yet seen. So I'm just wondering what the difference is and why that was filed before we had even seen and discussed an element of it.
Well, that's probably just, is, I can't really tell you why that was, but what you're seeing now is no different than basically what you saw in sixty percent. The project has not changed in what's in the project and the general emphasis of the project. The only, only thing that's changed since, from sixty to ninety was the change in detail. We added the details to the project, and especially in the notes and so forth were formalized. But the only thing that changed since I've had a chance to come before you was the additions or changes that the DEP Coastal Unit required for us to be able to obtain that CCCL permit. And that was the, just the minor things I, I said. So the next set of plans will be, you know, plans issued for construction, and we go from there. That doesn't mean a plan, a set of plans doesn't change once we issue for construction. You can have questions that come up during the bid process that cause an amendment to the plans, or addendum, as we call it. And then plans can change as you get into actual construction. There may be conditions that were unforeseen. We trust that there won't be any major changes, but it happens.
Sure, I understand. I was just curious, because I know these plans that were submitted to the DEP is ninety-five percent. We're taking the survey date and the plan date, excuse me, is August the 28th, and the ones that you showed were in October. So I'll look forward to seeing those plans and just sort of comparing and being able to see if there are any differences, because the dates are different.
I understand. Well, those, those dates, the difference in the dates is the fact that there were conditions put on the designs from the department on issuing that CCCL permit. And once that was done, then, of course, our consultants needed to add those changes to the plans and make the, make the, some notes were also refined. I mean, if you give an architect or an engineer of an unlimited timeframe, they can sit there and look at a set of plans forever and make minor changes. Having been a designer myself, I know that.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying. My next question is that you referred to the new sand, sand structure as a dike. And I know that a lot of the other dykes in that area that are supportive structures of the jetty system and throughout Noriega Point are actually part of easements held by the Corps of Engineers. Will this have some sort of easement or restriction placed on it as well?
I don't know any restrictions that would be placed on it. I'm not sure what you, what you're inferring to as far as restrictions. It's, it's name, the semantics that change the name of that from being a dune to a dike is because the dunes are typically looked at as these sand structures, natural or man-made, that are facing the Gulf of Mexico. And this is not a dune structure that is a primary dune that, that faces the Gulf. It's basically a, well, the last part of it is a man-made structure, and it really forms the purpose of a dike. Should water levels reach a certain storm event, that this dike would prevent the waters from rolling over the, over the point, rather, and directly across the harbor into the, all the structures that are built there on the other side of the harbor. As you know, we've had, we've had several named storms since this project has been completed, and we have not had any significant damage or changes out there at Noriega Point.
Yes, thank you very much for explaining that. You then talked a little bit about the ADA accessible areas, and I was just curious. How, where does the ADA accessible sidewalk begin?
I assume you mean the boardwalk?
However it is that people with those needs will enter the park.
Okay, well, the project includes, or way it was presented by the city some years ago, that there will be an access road and sidewalks between the entrance of the park and the ending of the road that is currently there at the end of Noriega Point. Yes, thank you, James. The, if you blow that up some, the, any, any construction of the roadway and sidewalk is to be funded by the city itself or through a developer's development order for that portion that goes between the entrance of the park, which you can see on this drawing where the entrance is. And then you go to, blow it up some, you'll see the ending of the roadway, the paved roadway now. That sidewalk and the roadway were, were designed by our consultants and permitted. So the city would have to only go out and bid the roadway and sidewalks and so forth construction. Or otherwise, you have the developer of that last piece of property build the roadway and sidewalks and other amenities, stormwater, et cetera, that would need to be constructed in that part of Noriega Point. But the boardwalk in which I'm talking to, which is funded by the NERTA project, begins right at the entrance of the park itself, there where the restroom facilities are, the boardwalk that goes to the shelter or pavilion, the boardwalk that goes down towards the beach, and then the boardwalk that goes all the way around the harbor side out to the point of the project of the, of Noriega Point. That is all ADA accessible.
Okay, and where is the handicap parking?
Your handicap parking would be in that portion of Noriega Point that is to be constructed by the city. It's been designed, but it's not included in this project.
Okay, and I believe that's something that's under investigation right now, but in terms of the road and who's of the road and who's responsible for it. But as of this time, do the plans, any plans you've seen account for actual parking spaces that are handicapped?
Yes.
Okay, good. So they're on the section of roadway, not all the way into the park, though?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I felt like in some description of the project, it said a road into the park as opposed to stop, which, stopping just before it. And the reason for the detail here is I noticed that on the property lines, at least on the ninety-five percent plans presented to the DEP, the property line is not the property line shown on the deed or the dedication legal description.
Dr. Ramzal, I'm not going to comment on-
That's really out of sight of his purview of his presentation today.
Well, he's part of the planning and pulling together the plans.
But that's what he's given us, is Noriega Point project plan.
Absolutely, and part of the plans would be lines and making sure everything's in the proper property and parcel. So that's something that we need to be looking into, and I think our attorneys may already be examining that. The last question I had, I believe, had to do with the CCL permitting. Who is actually on that permit? Is the city listed on that permit, or is it the county? Is it the DEP? Who are the parties listed on that?
The permit for the design and construction of all those facilities is the city.
Okay, and the city alone?
That red, that red line that you see on that plan on the screen is the CCL line.
Right, so the city is on that by ourselves? There's no joint holder?
No.
Permitting, the permitting, obviously the line is the line.
City of Destin.
Perfect. That's all the questions I have. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's so good to see this coming along and all these details and getting them all in order. So thank you.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
I got one other person, Pierce, Councilwoman Abra.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this brief. Pierce, when you came to us with the Parks and Rec Committee, you were talking about the three walkovers, and just now you said that some of them may be questionable because of funding. Is that, did I misunderstand you? Are those three walkovers still part of the project?
Yes, ma'am. The project included these three walkovers. My only question is because of costs that are being experienced in the construction industry right now, we've got to look at what, what is the primary components of the project, and those dune crossovers were not. But they are including, they are included in the plans, they're included in the bid documents, but they'll be presented as three alternatives. So if, if, for example, the bids come in a lot higher than anticipated, then we would look at, you know, what can we construct with the budget and additional funds we acquire through going to the trustee group for available money? Will we be able to build one of them, two of them, or three of them? Our goal is to build all three of them, but as with anything, you know, you have limitations. Like, you may want to buy everything you can get on a new car, but then you have to start going back if the price is above your budget.
You've answered the question. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Glad to have you on the council.
Yes, and I got a couple more. Pierce, Mr. Braid.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it, how is it possible to build that pavilion outside the CCL line?
That, well, the pavilion was one of the things, it was brought in as a variance, and because the, the structure is referred to as a dune, it's not a primary dune like you have out there where you're along the Gulf Coast beaches. So because of that and because of our modifications to the boardwalk itself and other reductions such as the moby mat, we were able to, I guess you could say, negotiate with our beaches division to allow the construction of that structure.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for bringing us up to speed on this project. Next question is for staff. Just curious why none of these drawings were in our agenda packet that we were seeing tonight. Mr. Braid, we didn't receive these particular pictures until this afternoon, so I apologize for that. Okay, thank you.
That, I'll take the hit on that as far as the staff not receiving those till this afternoon. And that's my apology not being able to work within your timeframe last week. I guess my own schedule that ahead of me, and I will take the hit on your not having them. We'll make sure that you have these, any presentation materials in your hands within your usual submittal times.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. It's refreshing to have somebody just ante up and, you know, take the blame, so we can, we can move on. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Braid. Got one more, Pierce. Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Mr. Pierce, thank you so much for this presentation. Also, very excited about this to be coming to a close in the next twelve months, so it's pretty cool. James, could you put those first two pictures up that he started the very beginning? Real quick, just got a quick question. So you were talking about this is before the project, and this is, you know, more recently, not too recently. And then if you look at even the survey picture that we were just looking at, those little swimming swells that you were talking about are even larger than that right there, which I think the swimming swells would turn into like boat parking swells from what I see when I go out there sometimes. How, who is the responsible people, as those swells continue to erode and that potentially impacts that boardwalk that is being built, how does that like fall on the responsible party to stop the erosion, fix the erosion? I know we have an item coming up that we're going to talk about, which will be exciting to hear about, but how does that, who, who's that impact or responsible party for dealing with that erosion of those swimming swell areas on the park?
Well, well, primarily, as you'll see, the, the first picture there where the, you see the boat or ship barge moving in, that's actually about a day before they'd be actually begin driving the sheet piling for the project. Those embankments have pretty well stabilized themselves. We've had, well, we had Hurricane Michael, we had, we've had Sally, we've had a couple others in between. I can't even remember all the names. But the stabilization is holding its own. We don't expect, and nothing's guaranteed, but we don't expect from this design that those embankments are going to erode more. That's the whole purpose of the stabilization that you see there, those T-groins, as we call them. You've got two new ones, and we reestablished the original T-groins, groins that were out there.
I'm sorry, I was more referring to the swimming areas on the western side, not the point, but the swimming areas that are continuing to erode. So if you go back to the most recent slide that was provided last night or today.
Well, actually, they're, they're not, they have not eroded. They're intended to erode a small amount, so they create a slope that dissipates the energy of wave action that comes in there. But we don't intend that these embankments, as you see them now, are going to erode much more than you see them right now. And I'll hang on for your talk when you go to talking about the dredging that's operation that the Corps of Engineers is going to undertake in, in the next year or so. But those embankments are not. But as far as who, who is responsible for maintaining them, well, the point, with the exception of a portion of it, belongs to the City of Destin. So it's, you're not, hopefully will not have to do maintenance on those embankments. You know, I can't guarantee what type of storm may hit here in the, in the future, but with the storm action we've seen over the last two years, and that last picture you saw was taken in October of 2018.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Braid, one more.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, Ms. Schmidt, engineer Matt Trammell told me several years ago that, that engineered this, he had no idea how much that was going to erode. They did narrow the opening from the rocks down, I guess from the original plan, but he told me as, as far as how much, because I asked the same question, how much it was going to erode, he had no idea. He said it was depending on the wind, swells, whatever. But that's a great, great thought, great question, is who, you know, if it does, he wrote, who's going to foot the bill on that one?
I imagine if we do have to foot that bill, we'll be asking for a federal grant to get it fixed, just like we do with all our other parks that get tore up by storms. Got to love FEMA, right? Ms. Ramzal, last question.
Sure, and just a question, and this is for you, Mr. Barrett, or staff, but my understanding is that a section of the northern tip, perhaps even the eastern side, has slightly eroded already? Are you aware of that and why is that happening? Was that intentional?
Okay, I'll, I'll answer best I can, this is Pierce. Is it intentional? Well, we have the feeling that it may occur. The erosion you're talking about or outwash of sand is off of the northeastern part of the stabilization of the point. There's been some occurrence of, of water action that has pulled sand from behind that stabilization structure. Does it compromise the stabilization structure? No. Will that sand be replaced? Yes. We already had plans, in our plans, that when they build the restroom facilities and so forth, there will be some grating of sand in that area, and it was more than enough that would be used to fill that area that has washed out behind that stabilized portion of the point. If, otherwise, there's also sand that'll become available through the core dredging that's going to take place in the next six to twelve months.
Perfect. You answered that exactly. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you so much.
All right, Pierce, I thank you so much for your time and your presentation, and we look forward to you coming back. And I'm sure if any council members have any further discussions, they can contact you directly for good answers. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number three, public comments on the agenda items that are not public hearings and any other matters not on the agenda. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight, so I just want to encourage people to refrain to even discussing those. You'll have an opportunity when we're in that portion of the meeting. When you come up here, just state your name and, and your address, and you'll have three minutes to state your case. And like I said, it doesn't have to be necessarily anything on the agenda item. It could be any subject matter that, that you as a concerned citizen would like to share with the council. So at this time, by the way, James and Ray, I'll check with you before I close this portion of the meeting to see if you have anybody queued up or any texts or emails that need to be shared. So I will change my normal protocols of starting over here to tonight, we're going to start over this way. So if there's anybody over in this portion of the room that'd like to step up, come on up. Come on up, sir.
It's Parker Destin. Honorable Mayor, council members? Parker Destin, 730 Kelly Street. I only gave you a week off from having to deal with me, so I'll do my best. You got a timer on me now, though. So, in the previous four years, I think one of the greatest accomplishments that this council achieved was the clawing back of the procedures to review development. You know, the City of Destin was created to chart its own destiny for basically one purpose, which was to see what kind of growth would occur and have control over it rather than have the county be the exclusive arbiter of what gets approved in town. We lost our way over about twenty years, and procedurally over a, sort of a death by a thousand cuts, we basically handed everything over to staff. Well, we reversed that over four years. The issue now is that you guys have a lot of development review, and the result is that a lot of the code doesn't necessarily jive with what probably you guys here is public policy, meaning we have a lot of codes that promote growth in a lot of odd areas and, and allow for perhaps too intensive growth in certain areas for reasons that don't make sense anymore. Everything from parking credits to, to minimum green space requirements. What I say to you now is now that you have the ability to oversee development, now it's time to get your codes to catch up. You know, you had a contentious development review, an interesting one last week, or excuse me, last meeting, that basically a lot of folks hinged on the idea, they go, this is too many units, there's not enough parking. Why the heck is this something that the code says can happen? Well, it's because the code is old. You need to fix it. So that means if you don't like the idea of too much density, that means you've got to meet, you've got to instruct staff to go and bring you back an ordinance that readdresses the units per acre in certain, in a lot of these transition areas around town. I would say get started on that, because it's now time to start catching your code up to what you think you want the future to look like, which I think most of us agree that single-family residential is the way we want to go, and perhaps high-volume, you know, intense development of residential areas is not necessarily the way to go. Now, that's up for you guys to decide, but until your code says that, you're going to continually have folks who are going to come up for applications. And there's no offense for anybody who's on the, on the dock tonight, because I believe they're asking for stuff that is approved by the code. And honestly, if it's approved by the code, then that's what you got to approve, basically. But you got to catch up to codes. If you don't want to see parking garages around town without your approval, then you need to change your code, to change the code from a permitted use of a parking garage to a conditional use. If it's conditional, it has to come before you, before a public hearing, at which point you give it its blessing before it has to be approved. Otherwise, you've lost all your leverage. It just, it just gets approved. You need a multimodal overhaul, desperately so. The types of credits that, that are being handed out due to a system that never functioned and probably never will, that needs an overhaul. But you got to instruct staff to come back with, with the overhaul so that you can approve it. You need to do it sooner than later. The last thing I'll part you with is the old-time pottery property. Unless you guys want to be sitting here in a couple of years being asked to approve a 500-unit apartment complex, we better acquire it, and we better turn it into something that people want. And honestly, the easiest solution for everybody is that recreational-type facility that we've talked about. We got lost in the weeds on what we would put there if we got the property, but that's like picking out the drapes before you've, you've got the financing to buy the house. You need to buy the property first. And the only way that you can do that is with a cohesive approach where you guys as council instruct staff and a person from the council to go walk hand in hand, go get Mel Ponder, who is our commissioner, so he can talk to the, excuse me, so he can talk to the Terrace Development Council, so that you can both go to Trust for Public Lands and/or the Triumph Gulf Coast folks, that you can start acquiring that piece of property so that then you can have the conversation about what kind of recreational complex you want to put on there. I'll piggyback off what Dewey told me. Dewey did tell me that I think the, I think the folks over at school board are going to eventually be asking you for more space at the, at the recreational facilities next to Destin Elementary, because they're going to need to expand over the next several years. Now that they've got the HAFs and sales tax, you're going to be, potentially could be losing ball fields. Old-time pottery could be a good place to start that, and you got to get it going soon, because nothing happens fast. I went over my three minutes. Thank you for indulging me. It's always good to see you guys.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to, you know, get the cane and jerk you out away from the microphone, being a former council member.
Like the Oscar music to wave me off.
Well, I'm going to have to extend that.
To everybody, I know.
To everybody tonight, so.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for setting me up. Appreciate the comments, sir. Next.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I hope everybody's doing good tonight. I'm John Dowd Jr. with Dowd Law Firm, 25 Build Parkway, Fort Walton Beach, Florida, formerly in Destin. I was in Destin for ten years until you guys bought my office, which is now the Marler Drive parking lot, so I had to move out. But I still love Destin, and I'm here a lot. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Destin Yacht Club Owners Association. I think most of you are familiar with the Destin Yacht Club condominium. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Destin Yacht Club Owners Association. I think most of you are familiar with the Destin Yacht Club condominium building. The city's land development code and comprehensive plan contains a requirement in the South Harbor Mixed-Use District, which is the district that building's in, for a commercial component to be included in any residential structures that are constructed. And I don't know the year that was put in. It's not been in there too long, but I'm not sure the exact year, but it specifically states that residential uses should be prohibited within the SMHU area unless such residential developments incorporate a minimum incorporate a minimum of 4,500 square feet of publicly leasable commercial space. Destin Yacht Club was developed prior to this requirement being added to the LDC and the, well, it was developed prior to the city of Destin being incorporated. So it was prior to any comp plan or LDC even ever being in place for the city of Destin. And there is an area within Destin Yacht Club, which was previously leased to commercial uses back in the 80s and 90s, maybe early 2000. It ended shortly after that. It, it caused major turmoil, though, the, the mix of the two uses. That, for some reason, there was parking issues and a number of other issues, but in this particular building and the way it was structured, these two uses just could not peacefully coexist. I can remember lawsuits and just excessive turmoil. Some of you may remember the turmoil that went on. There was fences built and just, just a lot of friction in, in that building back, back at that time. And so basically, the, the commercial use has ceased. The Owners Association just stopped leasing it out and it, it was just too much stress to do it. And, and like I said, it's been, a portion of the area, which is the first floor area, was converted to a fitness center for the condominium. The second floor area, which is around 5,000 square feet, has just been sitting for years, almost 20 years. The, it, it kind of creates a liability for the Owners Association and that they have to go in there and inspect it every once in a while. It's deteriorating. They have to take care of it and it's more, it's, it's expensive for them to make, to have to keep up with it. So what they would like to do is to sell the area to someone that would put, they're thinking maybe two or three residential units and develop it into two or three residential units. My client met with the city staff who advised that there would have to be an amendment to the code and maybe the comp plan based on this 4,500-square-foot commercially leasable requirement. And the staff's been extremely supportive and helpful in trying to figure out a solution for this problem. And it seems to be a good approach to amend the land development code and possibly the comp plan since, you know, Destin Yacht Club was developed prior to the city even being incorporated and just due to all these controversies that need to come to finality at some point in time. And so based on discussions with the city staff and the land use council, my client would like to request that the city council ask the staff to pursue an amendment of the land development code and the comp plan if necessary to remove the 4,500-square-foot commercial requirement from developments which were developed before the city of Destin was incorporated. This, this is a, this is a narrow amendment that I believe would resolve the issues at Destin Yacht Club, but not open up the door to developments that were developed when this requirement was in place to have an escape clause. It, it really, and, and going down, up and down the harbor, I think this is actually the only building that this would, would apply to. So that's our request. You know, thank you for letting us come for you. If anybody has any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Anyone, Mr. Brayden?
Thank you. Would it be possible to do some horse trading for maybe some transit boat slips? Exchange for changing that?
You know, I'd have to talk to the, I mean, we obviously have to talk to the client and, and, and I, and I don't think we're here tonight to approve it. I think, and I think that would be something that could certainly be considered in, in your evaluation and discussion with staff through the process. I think tonight we were just wanting to approve having the staff.
Stay by the microphone so we keep it on.
I'm sorry. I think tonight is just to, to, to direct the staff to go, you know, look into it, see if it's, something can be done. It would have to be presented back before you, before it is approved. But, you know, I'd be glad to talk to the client about something like that if that, you know, something that was important.
That's just something that comes to mind, you know, just sitting there thinking if it's something, you know, kind of move it from retail space to, you know, transit boat slips. Still, the city's getting something out of it, so just a thought. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next. Hold on just a second. He's going to, she's going to, she's going to wipe that down for you. Go ahead and kick on the mic.
Got it. I had the pleasure of being here during that controversy. They were suing each other back and forth. Yep, that was where Harry Tees was located with bands playing at night. It was a nightmare. We, we all used to go. It was a nightmare for the folks that lived there. While this provision is presently in the code that requires commercial space in every project, I'm not sure we should not look at that to perhaps pare it down to what kind of commercial space because if we force some project to put in a commercial space that goes into having a nightclub slash restaurant underneath and around where people are trying to live, we're going to have the same problem to live with again. But I think that this is a, a unique way to fix this problem. As the gentleman said, this is the only condo that I can think of that this would affect. So we wouldn't be taking a action that would affect all the other projects at this time that may or may not be on the boards. So I suppose it would be proper to make a motion to ask the staff to work with Mr. Dowd to come back with a solution to the problem. And I will make that motion.
Let me, let, can we finish the public comment period and we can take up that action right thereafter before I get into the next item? Does that sound good?
Not a problem.
Is that good with you, Colin?
Yeah, you can do it at the end of this public comment section, or if Mr. Destin wants to do it during his section, that'd be, that'd be perfectly acceptable as well. Keep in mind, since it's not an agenda item, it's going to require a supermajority vote at this time. If you wanted to put it on your section at a future agenda, though, it would only require a simple majority vote.
Would, would, instead of doing a motion and a vote in the supermajority aspect of it, could we just do it as a direction to the council to bring, bring us back a, an amendment to the, to the code? I mean, this fits really right in what, with Parker's testimony about the issues, because we are redeveloping our code right now, so.
I mean, if we have consensus, then I think that staff would probably accept that.
Well, if, just if it was suit the mayor, after the public portion is over, I just assume how to vote. I remember that charter that I had something to do with writing many, many, many years ago, and it required actions of council be done by motion.
Sounds good to me. We'll just go ahead and finish this portion of it. I'll look to you immediately thereafter. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Terry Dan. I live at 662 Harbor Boulevard, Destin. About a year and a half ago, as most everybody here, I drive 98 exclusively. And I almost hit somebody crossing the street. It was so dark that literally I was up on them before I recognized that they were there. So it got me concerned, so I started driving up and down 98 to see why it was so dark. Well, it wasn't just dark there. It was dark everywhere on 98. There are sections of 98 where there are no streetlights for 500 to 1,000 feet. No streetlights at all. I don't know the long-range plan, whether y'all have discussed this, or the old council has discussed this, but I'm a developer and I know every project that I ever did. Part of the project was a requirement for streetlights in front of my development. Obviously, that's not the case here because there are major developers with no streetlights in front of their property. So hopefully, the council has that on their agenda to talk about long-range plan, hopefully sooner than long-range, to address that. But more so, the streetlights that we have here, nobody's paying attention to them. Mr. Mayor, I spoke to you about a year ago after a meeting and brought up this issue. And your response to me was, go see the city manager. I don't think I should be the one responsible for dealing with streetlights that aren't working. There's a website that you can go to. Some of you may be aware of it. You can pull up every streetlight in the city. And it tells you whether it's working or not working and whether, I guess Gulf Power or Public Works is, recognizes that it's working or not working. It shows about five or six streetlights that currently aren't working. They, they're aware of the problem, that it's not working. I did a count in March of last year. From Calhoun to Airport Road, there were 18 lights. Now, I may have missed a few because it was really dark and it's hard to see at night. But I went to Public Works meeting. I think maybe the last one they had public meeting and addressed it there. They weren't aware of it. The public, head of Public Works told me he would start checking into it. You pay a fee to Gulf Power, as I understand, for every traffic, every streetlight. Within the last week, I counted again. Since March, there are now 30 of your streetlights not working. I didn't count them all, but I would suspect that's 20% of your streetlights, they're not working. Two streetlights aren't working outside this building on Indian Trail. And five of the brand-new ones just put in front of the road improvements east of Airport Road aren't working, and they've only been out there for a couple of months. I know of two deaths on 98. One outside my building at beach. Happened late at night, at midnight. One at 172 on Harbor Boulevard, 98. Of a pedestrian walking across back on March 6th. I'm sure there are many more. I don't know the responsibility of the city. I would assume from a legal point of view, there could be some negligence liability if those streetlights were out and contributed to those deaths. I think it's a serious problem. It seems like nobody else does that I've tried to contact. I hope that somebody here will look into it, will see it as a serious problem. It's a health and safety problem. It's not beach access and it's not some of these other things that I know are important. But it probably is the most important thing that you as a board have to deal with is the safety and welfare of the community, and I hope somebody will look into it.
We will. You've brought it out clearly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? It's over here. Sorry.
Go ahead, Derek.
Can I make a comment on this?
Sure.
Yeah. Sir, I recall when you came to the committee and presented this information. And it was just as shocking and, and, you know, frustrating at that point. I don't recall if it was right before COVID or not, but I mean, I, I do remember when you did this and the direction, I believe, at the time was to ask the city staff and, and, and some of the code enforcement, different people to drive around when they're doing their ride-arounds and start taking notice of those things. And obviously, a lot's happened over the past year. But I do think it's a very important topic of our streets to be lighting them up. So how, how can we figure out, how, how can we get a a plan, how do we ask for staff to give us an idea of how they go about resolving this particular situation of safety?
What we'll do is we'll finish public comment, put that under your comment period, and we'll have a robust discussion, make motions, do whatever we got to do.
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll get through the public comment period, and I'm not trying to pan this off, but we, we'll keep it. It's, it's ordered. These people have a, a right to speak, so I appreciate your comments. And I don't know if you want to hang around to the very end, but Mr. Schmidt will bring that up. We'll have a robust debate. Okay, still working my way this way. Anyone here in the center? Seeing none, I'm going to move over here. Anybody? Marcy, you, you want to come up? Okay, anyone else? Thank you. All right, well, at this point in period of time, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and I will turn to Mr. Destin, and we'll go ahead and have the discussion on the code amendment. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, mayor, and I will just repeat my motion to direct staff to work with the attorney representing the condo association to come back to us with a suitable fix.
I'll second it. My second stands.
Okay, so we, we have a motion. We have a second. Any comments to this motion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take a vote. The vote is unanimous, so moved.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's go. Flip my, had to use my agenda for my note-taking. City manager report.
Before we do that, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if Ray or, or if we have anybody online.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me. Do, James, you got anybody?
I believe so. Mr. Mayor, Matthew Trammell, if you're still online with us. I see your hand raised there if you wanted to speak. Feel free to go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Loud and clear, Mr. Trammell. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to set the record straight.
State your name and address, Matt, for the public record.
Matthew Trammell, 735 Planet Drive. I was the engineer of record on the stabilization component of Noriega Point, and it was a, a good point brought up by Mr. Schmidt. We kind of lost some institutional knowledge with some of the staff that's left over the last few years. But I just wanted everyone to know what went into that design. So there's a very robust T-groin system, you know, sheet-pile walls, both parallel with the shoreline and perpendicular. And I, I recall many conversations with Councilmember Brayden. There was a lot of Blue Ribbon Panel Committee meetings. I think Mr. Destin was there. But the function of those structures is to be pre-filled, and then for a, an average wave condition, they will reach a point of equilibrium. The, the erosion within the embayments will slow down. Now, when the question is posed to me, what are they going to look like two years from now? Well, heck, I don't know. I mean, can you tell me how many hurricanes we're going to get next year? If you can, I can tell you what the shoreline will look like. We know very accurately what that shoreline will look like. But how many charter boats are going by, whether or not they're paying attention to the no-wake sign, what the mean and extreme wave conditions are going to be? No one anticipated an 80-mile-an-hour wind out of the north with Hurricane Michael, but we had that. So just to, to set the record straight on that comment, and then, Mr. Schmidt, to your point, it's very good, and, and it's good that you're thinking ahead. You, you're going to need to dredge Destin Harbor Entrance Channel. We dredged it a couple of years ago. Prior to Noriega Point stabilization, we were dredging it every year. We dredged it every year for three years. I don't see us needing to dredge that for another couple of years, thank goodness, you know, barring any major storm events. But the, the intent of the design was when we do, the Corps of Engineers, the city of Destin, the county, whomever, when we come in and dredge the mouth of Destin Harbor, that sand can very cost-effectively be dredged and placed within those embayments. But no project is going to be maintenance-free. I want to be very clear on that. We're dealing with Mother Nature. We're going to have maintenance out on that point. Compared to what it was, it's going to be a fraction, you know, of, of what we had been spending. But I, I want, want you all to understand, there will be maintenance required, but where we are dredging once a year, you know, maybe it's five, seven, 10 years. If we have calm events, I imagine it's going to be that 10 years. But it is something you should be thinking about as time moves forward. So that was it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Trammell. In being a legacy fisherman for 45 years, I know we didn't build that project on granite rock or dirt. It's a sand existence, and sand doesn't stick around here. Mr. Destin and I both remember what Double Yellow Bluff used to look like prior to Hurricane Opal. And it's a fraction of its size, so when you deal with Mother Nature and you're dealing with sand and dealing with waves and wind, all we can do is the very best we could do and expect that to spend money to fix it when it's all over. That's my only comments, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor, I had a comment.
Sure.
Is Matt still online?
Is Mr. Trammell still online?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a question for him?
Yeah, I was just wondering when you said, made the comment of setting the record straight, what were you trying to set straight?
Oh, your comment to where when, when you mentioned that you asked me what the, the shoreline would look like in, in the future, and I said I had no idea. I, I believe perhaps I may have been taken out of context. If, if you had asked me what the shoreline looks like two years from now, I can't tell you definitively without knowing what those coastal conditions are. I can tell you pretty accurately, if, if we don't have any major hurricanes, it'll look very similar to what it does today. it'll look very similar to what it does today.
Yeah, that, I mean, like you stated, you had, you'd made a, had a lot of meetings, talked to a lot of people. But I had one meeting, and that was with you and Cella in his office, and maybe somebody else in there. And I, I, I remember distinctly, and that's exactly what I just explained to the rest of the council, that you'd said, because I asked the question, how, how much would that erode? And you said you, you had no idea because of the, the winds and the waves and the sand, or the, you know, the tide and everything else, which was true. And that's exactly what you said, and that's, I mean, that's, nobody can tell. So I, I just making, I, I just didn't want to know if I was saying something wrong or, or, um-
No, no.
You know?
No, I just, I just wanted to add that additional detail, and then just for the, the new council members and anyone else that may be listening, um, a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of thought, a lot of research, a lot of data went into that design, and, uh, just, that's all I wanted. Just wanted to clarify, make sure everyone understood. There was, uh, for those of us who've been working on it for the last six, seven years, yourself, Mr. Destin, the rest of the council members, um, we all know how much work went into that, and I think we all should be very proud of it.
I agree. Thank you so much. That's all I meant.
Thank you.
The record is straight. Anyone else, James?
No, sir, not at this time.
Uh, any text messages or?
No, sir.
No? All right. Well, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and close the, uh, public comment period, and now I will turn it over to our illustrious city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item four A is regarding the United States Army Corps of Engineer and the Coast Guard Station dredging. Um, what we have is an opportunity, if we want it, um, to, um, obtain some sand at no charge to, to the city, um, that we could place on Noriega Point. Pardon me, I'm gonna remove this for a second. Um, we could place on Noriega Point. There are permits pending, um, by the Army Corps, um, uh, delineating two locations on Noriega Point. Um, one at the base of the, of the, I want to call it a dune, but I know they called it something else earlier, so I'll, I'll stand corrected later. But at the base, at the, at the base of that area, um, the other being, um, the area we talked about that is on the harbor side where there has been some erosion done. Um, this is up to the council if we want to do it. It should be a benefit to both the park and to the harbor. Um, it will protect the harbor, it will protect the park. Um, but if for some reason the council doesn't want to do it, um, the Corps has a backup plan. They can place that sand, um, on the Army Corps property by the East Jetty that's managed by FDEP, so.
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
All right. I got some people queued up, and if y'all don't mind that are queued up, we'll go ahead and make a motion in a second, and then have discussion. Like Roberts rules. Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, I move that the city council authorize sand from the U.S. Coast Guard Station and channel basin dredging project to be placed within Noriega Point Park as proposed.
I'll second.
I got a motion, and I got a second. First up, Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, city manager, um, you said you went to a meeting with the Corps on this? Did, did you say you went, had a meeting with the Corps of Engineers on this? Or who?
I did not. Mr. Warren has been, um, heading this up, and he has had multiple conversations with the Corps about this, and he can answer specific questions.
But they, but you didn't go to a meeting on this? We're talking about the, the sand and where it was gonna be placed, or could it be placed there?
Not a specific meeting with regards to the placement of this sand.
Okay. And who, who's been basically ram-rodding it?
Mr. Warren.
Mr. Moore?
Webb, I'm sorry.
Webb.
Oh, Warren, okay.
Mask, mask talk.
The Coast Guard and Army Corps of Engineers did approach the city about this project and introduced the idea. We did have a, uh, online meeting, uh, in October, and we asked several questions before we brought this item to council.
Did you have legal counsel with you at that time?
Yes, our, uh, city attorney was part of that phone call.
Okay, my question would be, why did you think you needed to have legal counsel with that meeting?
We, in pass dredging projects, we did have, um, uh, with part of East Pass dredging, uh, we did have, uh, legal as part of that process.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Uh, next up is, uh, Mr., uh, Dr. Ramswell. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Destin.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on the face of it, it looks like a pretty good idea. However, I've got two issues, and I, and I'd like to ask questions about and see if we can't address those. One is the color of the sand. I don't know if, uh, any of you guys looked at the, the color in the samples of the sand that were in the report. Uh, not exactly pretty and white. If we spread that sand all over, what's basically the, the first thing people see when they come over that bridge into Destin? I think we're gonna probably be a laughingstock if it's not white. The other problem I have is it proposed, and I'm, and the location, if the sand is white, is good on that side. As, uh, Mr. Trammell testified in his comments earlier, we've had to dredge the mouth of the pass numerous times in the past. Matter of fact, we had to pay for it ourselves one time to the tune of about two-hundred thousand dollars. Yes. If we take that sand from the Coast Guard and put it along that shore on the inside mouth of the harbor, we'll just have the pleasure of picking that up the next time we pay a few hundred thousand dollars and moving that sand somewhere else, because it will fall off and, and shallow up the mouth of the harbor there. So if we do determine that we should do it, then it all needs to be on the other side. It doesn't need to be on that inside of that.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, uh, Pierce stated that they were gonna move some sand behind that erosion of the pretty white sand.
Yes, and, and the erosion we're getting there is not erosion that's caused by natural causes. As, as Matt spoke earlier, it's, it's boat traffic, it's people pulling the bow of their boat up there and backing away to get away, and, and so we're not gonna be able to fix that by adding more sand. We're just gonna make it worse. So I would suggest we require that all the sand go on the other side, but not real happy with the color. I've, as I read through the document, it appeared that the person guaranteeing the color was gonna be right was a Coast Guard official. And I'm not so sure the DEP is not the folks that are supposed to be doing that. So I have questions about the sand color. The idea of putting it over there is good, because those abeyments will erode periodically. That's what they're designed to do. But we need to have white sand, guys, not, not some-
If, if, it, but it was also pointed out that if we don't agree to put the sand there, that they're gonna put it five hundred yards further down by the finger jetty.
And they will have put brown sand on the beach and not us.
Point well taken.
We, and for some technical questions, council, we do have Waylon Register from the Army Corps of Engineers online, uh, so if there's any technical questions, he might be able to answer those.
Oh, I guess if he's listening, he heard my concerns. The color of the sand does not look like it would match the white sand that's over on that point. Uh, I'd welcome any comments on how we can fix that problem.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear, sir. Go ahead and answer, uh, Mr. Destin's concerns.
The trouble with sand is there's no real way to know what you're getting until you get it. Um, however, uh, we have dredged the, uh, the boat basin, you know, in the pass, and the sand that came out of there before, uh, we spread on the Coast Guard Station where their volleyball courts are, and that was pretty nice, clean, white stuff. So we would expect, and won't forget, it's going to be very similar. But, um, yeah, again, there's no way to give any kind of hundred percent guarantee.
Okay, as you, and, and I'll just like this comment for the council, as you drive over the bridge toward the Coast Guard Station, if you will look to the shoreline over there that runs to the Coast Guard Station, you will see a striation of dark-colored sand. Um, my fear is that we're gonna get that and spread it all over our pretty project that we've now spent twelve years and have covered with pretty white sand.
Um, to clarify, uh, alternatives we're looking at is not necessarily placing it on the, uh, at what we call the sand dyke, the parcel B area, and the, where the East Jetty is, but rather at the, uh, the scour hole with the tip of the, uh, the West Jetty and the, uh, deep water there where it erodes away.
Roger that. Thank you for that correction. Uh, next up is, uh, first, Dr. Ramswell. Would you have any comments, or?
Yes.
While we have the Coast Guard gentleman on the line here.
Thank you, and thank you for being online, Mr. Register. Um, my comment is that according to Florida statutes, the inlet management plan, and the critically eroded beaches summary, which came out in June of last year, sand that is dredged is supposed to be placed on the most critically eroded areas. And right now, the most critically eroded areas, and this is according to that critically eroded beaches of Florida ca- came out last year, is that inlet right over there by the Osteen Beach Access. Um, that is the number-one most eroded spot, and then that's followed by the Holiday Isle Gulf Front, and then further down over, um, sort of just past, or, excuse me, where Danny Werfelway is. If you go, keep going down, I think that's almost over by Crabtrap Area. Um, but those are, according to the plan, the worst spots, with the inlet being the absolute worst, because most of that has eroded back to the point where, um, an inland parcel is now waterfront. So my suggestion and recommendation would be to follow in accordance with statutes and the recommendations of these plans to place it in the most critically eroded area, which would be that inlet area. Mr. Register, are you familiar with that area and, um, its erosion?
Uh, no, I'm not. Uh, where, where is this at?
It's, um, the section that's actually right off the Osteen Beach Access, and parcel B would be behind it. By the finger jetty area.
Okay. So along the, uh, the, the channel there?
Yeah, that little, the curve area that actually, several years ago, there was a big hole that was problematic, and it's continued to erode in that area. And around to the finger jetty.
Is that the scour area he was referring to?
I think so.
Well, that would be a perfect solution.
No, the, the scour area is at the, the tip of the spur jetty. Sticks out, uh, the, uh, water there is very deep, and it's causing the rocks to basically slide down into the hole. So periodically, that needs to be filled in.
So, so that'd be the alternative place that it would be put and not actually on the beach? It'd actually fill in around the rocks?
Yes, to help stabilize the structure.
Could we get a, an image up of that? I don't know if someone can throw up, I don't know, Google Maps or something that would show that area? One oh one E-six area. So to the east and down.
Other side.
To the east. Yes, right there.
Yeah, you can see there, dark color, very deep, and you can see where the rocks have been collapsing.
Yep, that area below that little finger jetty or whatever, and both sides of that up around into the curve. Because if you look at the actual parcel boundaries, you'll see the parcel lines now out in the water for the public area. So that would be my recommendation, would be that we place it the most critically eroded area, which would be there, and especially since, uh, Mr. Barrett mentioned earlier that they already have plans to be, um, filling in that section over there on the point with the sand that they're pulling as they build the restrooms and such over there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, is that, and this is just a question, is that not, um, like Councilman Decima saying, as far as the sand eroding from Noriega Point, would that not put the sand even closer to the pass where we would have to eventually dredge it from there as well? Does that make sense?
That makes sense, and I'm not an expert, but my understanding is the finger jetty prevents that northern section from doing it, but I, again, I'm not the expert. That's speculation.
I don't think anybody here can answer that.
Yeah, Mr. Barrett or Mr. Register? Did y'all hear that question, and maybe y'all have some insight?
Um, yeah, as far as where the sand goes when it erodes from the shoreline, that's, uh, that's a little beyond me. Um, if Matt Trammell's on, he may be able to answer that one. So, but yeah, periodically, we do, uh, uh, you know, we, we consider that area, you know, our sand dyke, you know, the, uh, sand extension of the jetty, and every so often, we do, you know, put material on there when we do our, uh, our regular inlet maintenance dredging and rebuild the, the sand dyke.
I just think it's pretty funny. We've got Osteen Beach Access, and right now it leads to no beach access almost, because it's gone. It's been eroded out.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, question, are, are we, do we have the opportunity to suggest a different spot? Or is that, is it that, or they choose? Like, I know Dr. Ramswell's suggesting something else. Do we, is that an option?
And I don't know if Mr. Register wants to answer this, but the way it was proposed to the city is that we basically have first option, uh, first right of refusal for the sand on Noriega Point, and they have that other auxiliary permitted area in the works, uh, to place it.
So, so, sir, do we have the option to change that red rectangle projected area?
I think so. At this point, we're working, um, the, in, in the permitting phases of this and trying to find somewhere to put the sand, and, you know, we would like for the sand to go to some sort of beneficial use. Um, and so, you know, giving the city Destin, you know, the first option helps identify somewhere to put it, and, you know, failing that, we'll have to go to, you know, Plan B or Plan C.
Thank you. So the, um, Mr. Trammell and other people said that the design of those swells are to erode, and that it was expected, and the, the, the designing of that area, that we will have to put sand back on there. Um, based on y'all's experience of history, and Mr. Destin, when the time comes, like, where, where would we? If we're gonna have to put sand there, is there certain areas that we'll be able to dredge from that we have a higher probability of getting matching sand? If the pass isn't needed, or the harbor's not needed to be dredged?
I think in fact, the maintenance dredging that he referred to earlier is where we usually got the sand to go back into those abeyments, and that comes out of the middle of the channel, and we've never had a problem with the color. It's just, I mean, it was very key to what the gentleman said earlier. We can't guarantee color. Uh, would not take the chance of putting discolored sand on that beautiful project we just did, and I appreciate their offer, and I'd like to help the Coast Guard, but I, I wouldn't take that chance.
Well, I, I, I would like to, I mean, Dr. Ramswell has a great idea. If, if, and it sounds like they're willing to have recommendations on a change of where we can possibly put it, and if they're open for those recommendations, I mean, I think a potential change in the motion or something to reposition that sand to a area that's not as in-your-face.
Yeah, and it is an existing spoils easement over there, so that should be fairly simple process. I'm happy to make a substitute motion, um, to place the sand on the inlet area over by the Osteen Beach Access and Finger Jetty. So that'll be a formalized substitute motion.
I was just gonna withdraw mine, but I couldn't get called on. Y'all kept talking and changing.
I had you next, ma'am. Sorry about that. We're violating our rules, our guides. It's not a rule. Um, so, uh, would you like to withdraw that motion?
Well, I was gonna ask if we are allowed by the Coast Guard rules to say we'd like the sand, but if it's not white, can we put it at the finger jet, at the finger jetty versus on the beach where it would be white? So if they are gonna give it to us, could we decide when it came up, okay, it's not white, we want it at the finger jetty? It is white, we want it on Noriega Point.
That's, it's kind of hard to do, because when it's wet, when they're dredging.
They're not gonna do it.
You can't tell the color until it dries. So it's, it's gonna be either or here, I think, is the only-
Just move it to the finger jetty alternative?
Yes, excuse me, Mayor. What I'd point out is if it's discolored, it will be on the beach at the edge of the jetty, unless they put it in the scour hole where they propose is their second choice, and it goes in the scour hole, it really doesn't matter what color it is, it's under thirty feet of water.
Mr. King?
Yeah, I spoke to a, uh, guy that's in the, it's in the dirtwork business, and this is essentially, it's masonry sand, it's white sand, white sand, and it would be, this was, this would be coming from Navarre, and it's thirty dollars a load, thirty dollars a yard, you're talking about three thousand to ten thousand yards. I mean, if there was any way to use it for the city, if we had somewhere to use it, I mean, that's a, anywhere from ninety to three hundred thousand dollars worth of sand.
Yeah, and I had another constituent that's got to move a bunch of pretty white sand that he's selling right now, that maybe we could use in that location. sand that he's selling right now, that maybe we could use in that location at a later date.
Which location?
Anywhere like the back, the harbor side, backfield, that, you know, we're, the concern here is putting...
On point.
Yeah. That's right. And so, thank you for that, Mr. King. Mr. Braden will go with you, and then we'll entertain a new motion and vote on that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just my two cents on it. That, I mean, as much as I hate to turn down sand, and we could use all we could, you know, possibly get out there on Noriega Point, but it's not, right now, it's not in dire need or emergency for that, and they, I believe, not several years ago, three, four, five years ago, I don't know if the Corps did an emergency dredging to fill that hole off the Finger Jetty, because I know a lot of the dive shops and the snorkel boats and stuff was raising cane, because they was filling it in, and now it's all gone. I dove that spot last year, and it was already at fifty feet, which is pretty deep up right there. So that sand's going somewhere pretty quick, but, um, yeah, I think, um, yeah, it's washing it out, so, um, that's probably gonna be the better spot for it.
Okay.
Like I say, we, we gotta dredge that pass, three, four years, and we'll probably need that pretty white sand then, so.
All right, well, then, Dr. Ramswell, I think you have a secondary motion, which will now be the primary motion, if you'd like to go ahead and entertain that now.
Sure. So, I move that the City Council authorize the sand from the U.S. Coast Guard Station and Channel Basin dredging project to be placed over at the inlet area near Noriega Point, uh, near, excuse me, the Osteen Beach Access and the Finger Jetty.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
And I have a second. We've had a lot of discussion on it, so I think we'll go ahead and take a vote.
One more question, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
Staff, the city has a white sand ordinance that requires staff to look at the sand and determine whether it's white enough or not. Have you done that? Or will you do that, and at what point would you do that in this process?
We will be coordinating with them in order to do, in order to do that. We were gonna do that on this project, too.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Web.
I'm sorry. We will be coordinating with them as this process moves on, in order to check that ordinance and make sure it is in compliance, if it was going on Noriega Point, and if it's also required for the state lands in, uh, near the Finger Jetty, that will also occur.
All right, at this point, without any further comments or questions, let's go ahead and take it to a vote. Eyes, the vote is six, one, so, so moved. Go ahead, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4B is an update on the Compass, also known as EnerGov, and we have Matthew Pace online to give us that update.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to first start by saying that we're now in the testing phase of EnerGov, and the project's overall success is gonna be contingent upon our staff fully committing to completing this testing, and our departmental users are the only ones that can actually fully test their departmental processes within the system modules. This testing cannot be outsourced, so we're, we're doing the best we can, but we need to make sure that we are fully committed to that. Once staff, testing phase is complete, I'm gonna be presenting with the Community Development and Code Compliance Department a beta version to the members of the public, so we can see it in action and get some critical feedback, and that is hopefully gonna be in January. And we're gonna also show how the Citizen Portal works and get some, like I said, critical feedback with that. So in order to move on to this beta, beta phase, it's necessary to have some testing completed. And what I prepared for you tonight is just an implementation update on the program. For those that are new to the council, this is a little bit of a preview to what we've been working on for the last year, and it will give you an idea of how the Compass system works. If you would like a more in-depth look at this, we can always do that for you later on. But we can go to the next slide, James. So our progress, keep going. We are in the final testing and training phase, and once we get this completed, and like I said, all of the testing is done with the public, we will go into production cut over, and that will allow us to set it up nicely for it to go live in early 2021. But for right now, this is a, a critical juncture in the implementation process. Next slide. Right now, we've fully implemented a GIS system into our EnerGov solution, which we, which we call Compass, and it has been a work in progress for the last year. We have had the GIS department, which is under IT, work with the county to get some really good in-depth layers that we can utilize. We're gonna start to try to expand those if we can, and we are working hand in hand with the, the county to make sure that this is a viable solution for the city. So, these are just some images that you'll see, I think you go to the next slide, James. They break down a lot of layers, you can actually start a plan, permit, code case, business license, right from a parcel, and so we, we really have been working on this. It's gonna make it a lot easier from the backend of the system, and as well as the customer support site, the CSS is what we call it. Next slide. Some of those GIS features, like I said, composing and adding additional layers to the create geo rules in the system, so they automatically can tag a property with the proper layers, whether it be a FEMA flood map, or zoning, or something along those lines, it will automatically alert people to where that is in the, in the planning process or permit process. And we do have some web-based and enterprise map options as, as of right now, until we move to our latest version, which will be after the initial release. Next slide. So what I'm gonna talk about tonight, a little bit more in depth, is the customer self-service, and this is that CSS that I was talking about as part of Compass. This is what everyone has been waiting for, and this is a huge part of the EnerGov project. It probably rivals the backend system, which the staff uses, but I think this is gonna be, be a major help and addition to the city for citizens. So I'm happy to show it to you now. Next slide. This is basically the design, I've been working on this with our Tyler folks, but it is, it's very simple to use, it's a button-friendly type process. You can see here, it is just a basic website, it is made for mobile devices, made for computers, it, it's a very versatile portal for customers to get onto. Next slide. This is just a shot of the backend, where you can actually see the application assistant, and it shows you what's trending in the city, so it actually will push to the top the things that are most used by the citizens, and it'll allow you to see those, you can also select by all, or break it down even further into licenses, permits, or plans. And then you can start the application process from here, and you can sign up an account, it's very simple, straightforward, and make it as easy as possible, so we don't, you know, convolute the process. Next slide. Again, this is the map portion, GIS works across the board, whether you're in the backend or on the customer service side, so here, you'll actually see the same type of map that you would have for the staff, and they can actually pull up, search an address. It'll auto-populate, and it will tell you if you're in the city limits, it'll tell you which zone you're in, and we're hoping to have the future land use map also incorporated into this, so we can do a few other things as well in the backend. So next slide. This is the invoicing portion of the customer self-service portal. You can see here that it's, it's a printable invoice, you can click on the little printer icon, it will print it out, ready to go, has your invoice number, you can pay for this fine, you can pay for this fee right online, so it's gonna be a, all in one shot, one-stop shop for everything, and you can see there, there's primary fees, miscellaneous fees, payments and such, and it will give a breakdown of the fees that are applicable to the permit that you are applying for, the plan, and you can see it all here. And this will be available in your portal section, so as a citizen, you'll have a portal access, and you can see this information. You can also pay these fees without having an account, so if you were having someone take care of this for you, and they didn't want to create an account, all you have to do is have your invoice number ready. Next slide. And this is the payment portal, this was, it's obviously in demo mode right now as we're implementing this, but you can see here that there is a fee, and you can enter all of your billing information, and it'll allow you to pay this information right online. So no more need to call in to make payments or do anything over the phone, this follows all of your PCI DSS complacency, and we are working with very large vendors that handle this information and security very well, so. Next slide, James. And I believe that's everything for Compass right now, I'm very, I'm gonna be very happy to show this to you once we go live, and I think it's gonna, like I said, open up a world of difference for the Community Development and Code Compliance Department, I think this will be a real asset to Destin, and I'm looking forward to it. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to take them.
All right, stand by one second. Any council members have any questions on this presentation? Go ahead, Mr. Braden.
Thank you. Thanks a lot for that, and most of all, thank you for keeping this project moving full steam ahead, there's a lot of people looking forward to it, so thanks a lot, great job to, to all involved.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, thank you for the presentation. Lance? Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next three items are housekeeping items due to us having new council members. The first of the three is appointment of city council representatives to the local and regional committees. There are eleven committees currently that we need representation on, and Mr. Bailey is going to facilitate this portion of the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, there are several local and regional committees for which the City of Destin is represented by a member of the City Council. The agenda report lists all of them, and like the city managers said, are eleven, and this also provides a brief description of each of the responsibility. Also listed are the previous council members, primary and alternate representatives. Tonight, the council may appoint, or reappoint, a primary and alternate member to each of the committee, so if council is ready for, to make that appointment, the first committee listed is the Economic Development Council Policy Board. Primary was Councilmember Overdeer, and alternate was Councilmember Ramswell.
Yeah, is there any changes to that?
Do you want to stay on it? Y'all wanna stay on it?
Y'all wanna remain in place?
Yep.
You know what happens when you raise your hand and volunteer around here? Done. Right? That's what happened two years ago, Skip said, so that's what we'll do.
Can I have a motion in a second?
Yeah, I'd suggest a motion.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none? Vote is unanimous, so move, congratulations.
The second one is the Northwest Florida League of Cities, primary is Councilmember Ramswell, alternate Parker Destin.
Well, there you go, we're gonna have to have a new replacement, so, go ahead, Mr. King.
Nominate Teresa, Councilwoman Abear, for the Northwest Florida League of Cities.
All right, we got a motion in a second.
Real quick, do we want to do a primary and an alternate here?
Yes.
The primary was Dr. Ramswell, and this is for the secondary?
Just for the alternate, Johnny? Okay, and so the, the motion is to reinstall Dr. Ramswell as the primary, and then Teresa as the alternate, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So noted. So we have a motion, second, okay, would that change? Yep, let's take it.
Next, we have the Northwest Florida Military Sustainability Partnership, primary Mayor Jarvis, alternate Councilmember Ramswell.
Has this even done anything?
Not yet.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Unless you went and I didn't.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, those two members stay in place.
So we have a motion, we have a second, seeing no further discussion. Eyes have it, unanimous, so move.
Next is the Northwest Florida Regional TPO. Primary, Councilmember Overdeer, alternate Parker Destin.
All right, so, well, Mr. Overdeer would like to remain as primary, but we need a recommendation or a motion for a secondary.
I'll move that Kevin Schmidt.
I second that.
If he wants it.
Run now or forever, hold your peace, Kev. He's good with it. We're voting.
Sir, Kevin Smith is alternate, right?
Yes. You gotta be fast if you're gonna run. Keep going, we're waiting on Mr. Braden. Eyes have it, so move, congratulations.
Next is the Okaloosa Walton TPO, primary, we have two primaries, Councilmember Overdeer, Councilmember Morgan, alternate was Parker Destin.
And I think, didn't we change this back when we were doing the medians? Rodney got interested in it and wanted to be on the TPO, and so we changed it where Rodney was the alternate, and, and I would entertain a motion to have Rodney as the primary, and I'll be the, the, the alternate if Rodney's...
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Well, we have, now currently, we've got two primaries, so...
I don't know, I don't know how that happened either, or why that happened.
I think we can have two seats on the table, sir, on this one.
Oh, two primaries.
Two primaries and one or two alternates.
How about you and Rodney as primary, and then one of our new members?
Sure.
Are you interested, Mr. King?
Not at this current moment.
Or Mr. Schmidt, since you're on the other one? Might be a good segue.
This is the, this is the regional...
I'm gonna hold off for now.
Again?
No.
Teresa said she'll do it.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we have a motion now to make Rodney and Skip the primaries, and Teresa the alternate?
Second.
And I have a second. Vote. Eyes have it, so moved, congratulations.
Next, we have the Okaloosa County League of Cities, normally, we have the mayor and the mayor pro tem on this one.
Sounds good to me.
We'll have to make a motion to put the new mayor pro tem, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So, Councilmember Destin?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We'll, we'll make a hell of a team, sir. So we, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none? Vote is unanimous, so moved, congratulations.
Okay, we have the Okaloosa County Public Laboratory Cooperative, primary, Councilmember Braden, alternate Karen Marler.
Does anyone want it?
I'd be glad to nominate Mr. King, since it's a very easy job.
What is that supposed to mean?
Johnny, I've missed one meeting in six years. You're good.
All right, Mr. King accepts that responsibility. We have a motion?
Sir, may I clarify, primary or alternate? Your primaries?
Braden is primary, Mr. King is the alternate.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second?
Mr. Destin did.
Any further discussion? Eyes have it, so moved, and after we're done with this little exercise in governmental control, we're gonna take a break.
Okay, Okaloosa County Public Transit Cooperative, primary, Councilmember Overdeer, alternate, Councilmember Braden.
I'm, I think they, you guys want to stay? Yep, I need a motion. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? No further discussion? Eyes have it, so moved, congratulations.
Next, we have the Tours Development Council. Primary, council member Parker Destin, no alternate, no.
He accepts. Do we have a second? Yes, he does. You got a second there, Johnny?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second.
Sir, do we want to, do we want to appoint an alternate on this?
Yes, that would probably be good.
I'll make a motion to make Councilwoman Abear the alternate.
So, quick, let me, let me clean this up from a, from a Roberts rule standpoint. I think we've got a substitute motion to appoint Skip as primary and Teresa as alternate, because we, we already had a motion on the floor from Dewey.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
I'm still learning.
I was just hitting the button. So, so noted. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Destin, we got lucky in there. Eyes have it, so move, congratulations.
Okay, we have two more. Next one is Walton, Okaloosa, Santa Rosa Regional Utility Authority.
I may motion leave the members as they are.
Okay. That would be primary Mayor Jarvis, alternate council member Brayden.
And I accept.
I've been skipping Brayden a lot tonight.
That's actually a pretty cool meeting to be in on. I learned a lot. We have a motion, we have a second? Do, uh, do you have a comment? Okay. We'll take a vote. Vote is unanimous, so move, congratulations.
And lastly, we have West Florida Regional Planning Council. Primary, council member Overdeer, alternate Chadha Morgan.
Okay, so we need a, we need a motion for an alternate.
I'll do that unless someone...
I'll make a recommendation, uh, Rep., Ms. Ramswell.
Whoever I am.
Doctor.
I'll second that.
For clarity's sake, in the public record, is Dr. Ramswell will be the alternate. Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a vote at this time. Uh, eyes have it, so move, congratulations.
That's all we have, sir.
All right, thank you very much. I reported we're gonna take a break, but we'll, we'll take a break before the public hearings, because I don't think the next two items will take very long. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4D, another housekeeping matter. Appointment of members to the citizen volunteer committees and boards, and Mr. Bailey will again be facilitating this.
By our city code, each council member is entitled to make one nomination to each committee, and the entire council votes to appoint those members. The term of each appointed member runs concurrently with the term of the nominating council member, and since four council members left the council, I created at least four vacancies in each of the committee. But the, the four new council members can appoint, can nominate the representatives tonight. And if you're ready, the first committee is the Board of Adjustment. Uh, we have, on this one, we have four vacancies, but unfortunately, there's only one applicant. So obviously, only one of the new council member can make the appointment tonight, but we'll continue to seek more volunteers for this.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. David Emerson to the Board of Adjustment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, seeing any further discussion? Seeing none? The rest of your council folks need to drum up some volunteers. Waiting on Kevin and Dr. Ramswell? Eyes have it, so move. Go ahead, Ray.
The next one is the Parks and Recreation Committee. This one, we have four vacancies with six applicants, including one that submitted after we published the agenda. That's Leslie Smith, and I provided you a copy of her, uh, application form. So...
Ray, if you don't mind, what I'll do is I'll just look to each individual new council member and let them make a nomination. We'll handle it that way, so you don't have to read them all off.
Sure.
Okay? And we'll start down there with Kevin.
Probably not a shocker, but I'm gonna nominate Leslie Schmidt to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? Seeing none? Eyes have it, so move, congratulations. Mr. King?
Do we have to vote on these each individually, or could we do all four at one time for the committee?
You could do an entire slate.
As long as you're unanimous.
Yeah, you could do an entire slate if you guys want to. So if, for the next ones, if Teresa, Dewey, and Johnny wanna say who their three are, and somebody wants to nominate that slate.
As long as we don't have any opposition.
As long as you don't have any opposition.
Which we're not gonna.
Unlikely.
We don't oppose volunteers, especially ones that get appointed. Johnny?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint, reappoint Ms. Nikki Johnson to Parks and Recreation.
I got a motion?
I second that.
Okay. Teresa?
I make a recommendation to nominate Daniella Piper to Parks and Recreation.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Here, here's what we're gonna do, since we're just nominating the rest of this slate, we'll just have one motion from one council member at the end, which would then need to be seconded and voted on. So you're not gonna get a motion as to each one, they're just nominations at this time.
Thank you, sir. That sounds so much more practical. Mr. Destin? Okay, so everybody's covered?
Motion to approve the slate?
I have a motion to approve the slate.
I second.
Do I have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none? Eyes have it, so moved.
Harbor and Water Waste Board, we have four vacancies with three applicants.
I'll start with you, Mr. Schmidt.
I keep on wanting to press this little green yes button to talk, but that's the...
It's the red one, right here in front of you.
Can you come back to me, sir? Can we start on the other end, if you don't mind?
Ms. Abear said she's ready and prepared.
Mr. William McKissick.
Johnny?
Uh, Mr. Casey Jones.
And Mr. Destin? Okay.
Motion to approve the slate unless there's another...
Nope.
Space for Mr. King.
Kevin, are you gonna make one up? No?
That's what you get for starting on the other end, there's only three nominations there, huh?
Maybe that was his intent.
It's my fault.
You can have another cookie at break, okay? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Go ahead, take it to a vote. I'm gonna have one, so don't feel bad. Eyes have it, so move.
So just to understand, I need to get somebody now, like undermine name for that one, right?
Yes. You're not personally responsible, but it would be nice.
We have the Harbor Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee. Four vacancies and four applicants.
I'm ready.
I was gonna start with Mr. Destin, just to give you a little extra time.
I fired up the light pretty quick on this one, so...
Go.
Uh, I'm not sure if his application came in or late or not, but Mr. Ian Blaze, he's a citizen here and a business owner, and got his family here, so I'm...
Hi, sir. I did get some, uh, application for Mr. Blaze, but it was for the harbor capacity.
I got you, that's fine. That, is an application required to be nominated?
It was for a harbor capacity steering committee, which is not in tonight's agenda.
Yes, sir, I understand, but I'd also like to appoint him on the Harbor Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Does he have to have an application on file for me to nominate him?
I can provide it later, but I did get it.
He's got one already there, just under a different title, so go ahead and nominate.
Ian Blaze.
Ian Blaze, go ahead, Mr. King.
I don't currently have anyone.
Go ahead, Ms. Abear.
Ms. Sandy Trammell.
And Mr. Destin? So, we have three, and that's all...
Motion to approve the slate?
We have a motion to approve the slate, do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I have a second, seeing no further discussion?
Yeah, I...
Go ahead, Mr. King.
If, if, if nobody's gonna put Jim Green on there, I will.
I wish you would.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll nominate Jim Green.
Thank you.
Motion stands?
Second stand?
Second.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion? Keep... There you go. Eyes have it, so move, congratulations.
With the local planning agency, four vacancies and four applicants.
I'll start with you, Mr. Destin, just to throw Mr. Schmidt a curveball.
Mr. Destin, could you press your button?
Yeah, since we have four, I will, I will pick Jim Wood.
Ms. Abear?
Marcy Bell.
Mr. King?
Karen Drexler.
And Mr. Schmidt.
I'm holding off for now.
So we have three out of the four been nominated.
Motion to approve the slate?
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none? Eyes have it, so moved, congratulations. This is the last one coming up, Ray, or you got more?
Two more.
Two more.
I got two more. Public Works, Public Safety, we have four vacancies with five applicants.
There you go, you got a sport or a sport to choose from. Mr. Schmidt?
I'll nominate Anthony Ramswell.
Okay, we got Anthony Ramswell, go ahead, Mr. King.
Marcy Bell.
Got Marcy Bell, Teresa?
Richard Hickey.
Richard Hickey, and Mr. Destin?
Shirley Perman.
And Shirley Perman. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept the slate.
Motion to approve the slate?
Second.
Seeing no further discussion? Eyes have it, so moved, congratulations.
Town Senator CRA Advisory Committee, here we only, we only have one current member. We have six vacancies with only three applicants.
You're on it?
Yeah, I'll nominate Lockwood Wernet.
I'll nominate Michael Stan, Sandsteed.
Mich, Michelle.
I'll nominate Michelle Sandsteed, excuse me.
Mr. King? Mr. Schmidt?
Uh, I'm gonna hold off for this one, too.
Mr. Destin?
We have one left.
Yes, sir.
And that is Dolores.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, and we'll have to fill these other positions at a later time.
Motion to approve the slate?
Got it.
Second.
Motion to approve, and I have a second, any further discussion? Take it to a vote. Eyes have it, so move, congratulations. Thank you, Ray.
That's it.
Mr. Mayor, item 4E is we need to replace the council fact-finding representative to Gulf Power for the new franchise agreement and the undergrounding of utilities.
I'd be interested in that unless someone else is.
I would be, too, because I've been involved with it.
And, and so would I.
And so would Mr. Destin, because his son has been on it.
We can all make our cases. I, I was on the original group along with the city manager, city attorney, who negotiated the franchise thirty-three years ago now. Without the things we put in the franchise, such as the right to, to purchase and a number of other things we put in there, we wouldn't be in this position to negotiate anything at all today.
Well, I'll recommend Dewey, Destin.
I have a motion?
And I'll second that.
Yes, and I'm okay with that, too, Dewey, because you and I are on the same page, so it doesn't matter.
I will tap our former representative and make sure that he gets a word for free, too.
There you go. There's always a blessing, Johnny. All right. We have a motion, we have a second, to make Mr. Destin our representative for the undergrounding project. Seeing no further discussion? We'll take a vote. Eyes have it, so move.
Finally, Mr. Mayor, we have a brief update on the fiscal year 2021 visioning session being presented tonight by Webb Warren.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, with the recent changes in the election cycle, we have proposed to move our visioning session to January of each year. Uh, that will give our, uh, new council members a little bit of a chance to, uh, get their feet wet, feet wet per se, and also be great timing for us to start working on our strategic plan for next year. Staff is proposing that Buzz Eddy will facilitate this session in January, and just if council has consensus on this tonight, we'd like for Mr. Eddy to reach out to council members, uh, over the next few days or, or early next week in order to start establishing, um, basically priorities. You will have your opportunity to work with him if council approves to start communicating your thoughts and your ideas to him so that we can begin preparing for the upcoming visioning session in January. We're excited about this, and this is a critical, critical component, the visioning session is, as part of our strategic planning process. This is the opportunity for us to create our plan for next year, where staff can, given council's direction, we can then start planning for the 2022 budget, which, believe it or not, that budget process starts in the April to May timeframe, so it's gonna be here before we know it. So, uh, this is, again, a great process. The public will be invited to that visioning session in January, and just would like to get, uh, council's general consensus that that would be the route that we would like to move forward with.
Could be early January or more towards the end?
It'd be more toward the end, and we can send out some dates, probably later in the week, near the end of January, and we can send out some dates for, that council can let us know their availability on.
Mr. Brayden?
Thank you. I don't believe we have in the past, but I would really like for the department heads to bring in their wish list or what they think their department needs, so we can kind of put that in there, so we can work it into that budget. Um, I don't think we've...
I can't, I, I, from a staff's perspective, I think that's a fantastic idea. I think we'd welcome that opportunity and be part of that process. I'm gonna be happy to bring our needs list and ideas to that for discussion.
Thank you so much.
I agree, Mr. Brayden, and not just for the budgetary concerns that we'll be doing in April, but just when you're talking about visioning and preparing what you want for projects to carry us into the, into the next year, you gotta know what they would like to. Yeah, I agree, I agree. So, uh, basically, they're looking for a, a consensus to, uh, uh, let Mr. Eddy to, uh, start the process. Everybody's nodding their head, so, so we, we do have a consensus here. So Lance, you and Webb, get that party started.
We'll make it happen.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's all I have, sir, thank you.
All right, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and then get started with a public... Staff members to come back to their seats. I didn't think I left any cookies, so you guys don't have anything left to eat? All right. We'll go ahead and reconvene the meeting at this time. Up first, well, now we're entering into our public hearing portion. Kyle, you wanna take it away?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have first five A. This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-eighteen-LC, an ordinance of the City of Destin, Florida, amending Article Three definitions of the Land Development Code, amending Article Eight of the Land Development Code to prohibit motorized scooter rental businesses, offices, and other related land uses within the City of Destin, providing for findings of fact, providing for incorporation into the Land Development Code, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
And seeing how this is a public hearing, I'll open up the public comment period of, of this hearing at this time. After that, I'll entertain a motion and we'll have debate discussion and take a vote. Is there anyone here that would like to come up and speak to ordinance twenty-eighteen-LC? And come on up, Ms. Bell. For the record, you still have to state your name and address, even though I know it by heart.
Marcy Bell, Three Gulf Rees Court. So this isn't specifically about this ordinance, but does it in reference to those little mini scooter things? I don't know. Have you seen them on Holiday Isle a couple of times? My question is, is where did they come from? Those little two-seater things that they run up and down, seen at Highway ninety-eight, are somehow ending up on Holiday Isle? That's a concern for me, and I just wanted to make a mention of it for the safety of those guys. Thanks.
I have a question, a concern for you, just because they're here? Are they leaving them here or?
No, but they're driving up and down Holiday Isle, and where do they come from? How far have they come in one of those little two-seater? Are they on the back road all the way down? What's the speed limit on those guys? That's what I mean. I mean.
I would assume at this point they're private, because we haven't had.
No, no, these are rentals.
Oh, they are?
They have the rental companies on.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject, at the LPA, at the LPA meeting when this came to us, that was specifically talked about, and what they mentioned, staff possibly, was that unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to stop the Walton County, because they're probably coming from scenic ninety-eight, and they're, and they're not in the City of Destin's jurisdiction. So you're right, and I think they're street legal, though. I mean, they, they legally can come down ninety-eight, if you're talking about the two-seater scooters. So we won't be able to stop them, from my understanding, traveling down our highways. They just can't do business in the city with this.
Right, that's what, I know that's what's specific to this ordinance is about, doing the business. But my, my point being is, how far are they travel? Are they traveling from Walton County all the way down?
I would say so.
Commons Drive, Highway ninety-eight to get here? So, I don't know. Anyways, that's it.
No guts, no glory, right? I said, no guts, no glory. Hey, honey, hold my beer and watch this. Yeah, it's probably not very well-advised to drive one of those things down Highway ninety-eight. So is there anyone else that would like to speak on this proposed, proposed ordinance? Oh, James, do you have anybody queued up making any comment?
No, sir, not at this time.
How about you, Ray? Any text message? Seeing no more further public comment, I am going to close that portion of this hearing, and I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make that motion, Mayor. I move that the City Council approves proposed ordinance twenty-eighteen-LC on first reading and direct the city clerk to advise for sec, advertise for a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion, any of our council members at this time? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take this to a vote. Ray, could you set me up there on the screen? Sorry. All right. The vote is unanimous, so moved. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have next item five B. This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-thirty-one CN. An ordinance of the City of Destin, Florida, amending Article Seven, General Provisions of the City Charter to create a new section prohibiting the conveyance, sale, lease, or other transfer of interest of city parks without a supermajority vote of the City Council, providing for a referendum on the charter amendment, providing for a ballot question, providing for a vote at the March nine, twenty-twenty-one special election on whether to prohibit the conveyance, sale, lease, or other transfer of interests in city parks, subject to certain exceptions as provided in the charter, providing for coordination with the supervisor of elections, providing for coordination with supervisor elections, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
All right, thank you, sir. Seeing how this is a public hearing, I will open this por, portion of the hearing for public comments. Is there anyone in the room that has one way in on the, the first reading of ordinance twenty-thirty-one CN? Do you have anybody, James? Queued, no one? Ray, any text message, emails, comments?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion? You had seconded that? Dr. Ramswell, thank you, and I have a second. Is there any further comment? Seeing none. Vote is unanimous, so moved. Mr. Bowman?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This next item is five C, the first reading of ordinance number twenty-thirty-two CC, an ordinance of the City of Destin, Florida, relating to parking fines, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for the amendment of Article Two of Chapter nineteen point five, parking regulations, providing for incorporation into the code of ordinances, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, sir, and I will open the public comment portion of the public hearing at this time. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this first reading of ordinance twenty-thirty-one CN at this time? Seeing no one in the audience? Any comments online?
No, sir.
Text message or email?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion. The City Council approved proposed changes, code of ordinance, Section nineteen point five dash fifty-six, penalty for violations of our non-payment from thirty dollars to one hundred dollars.
Second.
And I have a motion, I have a second, and first up, Mr. Destin.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that concerns me about this, that's a pretty dramatic and draconian increase. Who is it that writes those parking tickets? Is it still the Sheriff's Department, or do we have code enforcement doing that?
Code enforcement will be doing it, and it will be progressive. They will start out with verbal warnings, written warnings, and then if needed, then they can go to this step.
The only thing that, that concerns me on the issue is where you can park and where you can't. Seems pretty confusing in Destin right now. As a general rule, I think parking on the roadway is allowed and less prohibited. We've got no parking signs all around the school, but every time we have a school function, people park all over that, and we don't write tickets. If someone decides they should write tickets and start passing out hundred-dollar fines, it just seems too much to me. So I'll offer, what are we at now, thirty? Offer a substitute motion and we raise it to fifty.
So I have a substitute motion, is that okay with the second? Or, I mean, with.
That's correct.
I'll second it. I have a second for discussion.
Okay, I think that the whole thing came out of the short-term rental task force, and the deal was that they, the, people weren't paying attention to the thirty-dollar fines on the short-term rentals. And so we're trying to get their attention, and we figure maybe a hundred dollars will get their attention. I know thirty dollars would get my attention, but I mean, for sure, a hundred dollars would get their attention. I don't know, I mean, we could certainly try it at fifty, and I'd, I'd be willing to, to try that. And then if that doesn't work, then we can, we've always got a hundred that we can go to.
That sounds like a decent compromise. But let me ask another question. When you don't pay the fine, if it were issued by the Sheriff's Department, they'll come looking for you. When code enforcement issues one and somebody just ignores it, what do we do then? To go against the property? How, how does it work?
Would you all like me to answer that question?
Yep.
Yes, please.
So if they don't pay a citation, then we have to go through the court to actually try to get it paid. When we go through the notice of violation process, that's when we can put the lien on the property ultimately by going through the special magistrate hearing process.
Microphone, Dewey.
So we would put a lien on the property where the illegal parking took place, is that correct?
No, so we do not go through that process with citations. For citations, we would have to go through the court to try to get them paid if they're ignored. We would only go through a process where a lien could be placed on their land if that was a notice of violation and code compliance hearing before the special magistrate, which is an entirely different process than the citation. So the citation would never result in a lien on their real property.
Okay, well, it, it seems to me we have a problem. We can make it a thousand dollars if they don't have to pay it, but I would welcome Councilman Overdires willing to compromise. Let's start at fifty, if it doesn't work, we can go up, but we need to figure some way to make it have some teeth in it, because, you know, I'm afraid people just take them and pitch them.
Yeah, it's a big problem. I think this ordinance was really, like Mr. Overdair said, focused a little bit over our community over there in Crystal Beach. Mr. Schmidt, I had you up, and then Johnny?
Yes, sir.
No, Johnny, you're next?
Yeah, I just was curious, and I had this conversation with some of the others. How do you determine the severity of a parking violation? Is it who puts the most heat on you, or, you know?
Our code compliant officers usually start out in the warning process. They have, if you ever look at, at the, and I think even the Sheriff's Department does, you look at their warnings versus their actual citations they write, it's like five to one. So if you're to the point where our code guys are writing you a citation for parking, you, probably not the first time you've been there. So I think that's usually how it plays out. Would you agree with that? Is Joey here? He's not here.
Joey's not here tonight, but I, I would offer this, that if we maybe modify it one more time to not to exceed a hundred dollars, where they could, we could ratchet it up. That way, it could start at a reasonable rate and, and then work its way up to a hundred.
Then we get into the subjective, whose idea of reasonable?
One thing you could do is you could put in a first offense, second offense, and third or more offense cost, so that it would take away the subjective element. And another thing, Joe's not here tonight, but another thing that Joey and I had discussed was putting into place the process where if you receive more than, say, three parking citations, at that point, a notice of violation would be issued, and you could go through the special magistrate process. And there would be due process there, but ultimately, that's where, if we switched over from citation to the notice of violation, you could have a lien ultimately placed on your property. But that would be after multiple violations.
I like that progression the best, out of all the options. But we have a couple. But we have a couple other people that'd like to chat first, and then maybe we can entertain. Well, we could probably just vote on the substitute motion, and then if it passes, we'll live with it. If it fails, then we can look at another motion.
Well, I would suggest if you have other council members that wanted to weigh in, you allow the other council members. Kevin, I think, did you have something you wanted to?
Yes, I got Kevin, Johnny, and Mr. Braden.
That was gonna be my main point that Lance brought up, was that the writing of the ordinance does say to $100. So first point was gonna be that we should clear that up to, up to $100, if that was the direction that we were hoping to go, because that's not what it says. But on top of that, the scaling factor would be a recommendation at some point, whenever we vote down the motion or whatever, to do the three to four offenses where it goes from 50, 75, 100, then a notice of violation or something like that. But one way or another, I would think we should adjust it for sure.
The whole reason this ordinance was being, is being developed and considered is we have a problem, and we're trying to deal with it. Mr. King.
Wait, I have a question for Mr. Schmidt. So based on what you're proposing, would we then do away with the warnings?
I don't think you'd get away with the warnings, because if the, if the general idea is to go to the short-term rental market in the area who are making the majority of these violations, unfortunately, a lot of them, although they should know not to park in certain places, some of the rightaways are possibly not as known. So I think it'd be unfair to stick a $50 citation on their window, and they're gonna be gone two to seven days later anyways, and we probably will not see that ever be paid. So I would still do a warning, because the warning will help us do the locals that are down over Destin Elementary and those streets and parking in a spot that says no parking. So the warning would still be beneficial for a lot of those people as well, that unfortunately, there's not enough parking at the elementary schools. So we, we, I mean, I've done it. I park where it says no parking, you know? I mean, you gotta run in there, your kid's kindergarten meeting, and you gotta get in there, you know? There's nothing else to do. So, but yeah, I would keep the warnings.
Mr. King.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask the same, kind of a similar, along the same lines, whose, and are we enforcing these? Are we, like, if, if you're coming, if you're in town for a week and you never plan on coming back to Destin again, are we sending these people to collections, or? That's all I've got.
Yeah, like I said, the whole purpose of this ordinance is put some teeth in a problem that we have, and it's some way to enforce it over time. And it's, that's, that's the whole gist behind that. Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my thought is, I mean, we got people out there who's just, you know, giving our code enforcement guys the finger, you know, for the parking, and then, you know, the only way to get, get somebody's attention is get in their pocket. And Kim, is it a different parking ticket? Because I thought that when a parking ticket was written, it was actually sent to the Sheriff's Department, and it was attached to their tag. Or is that something else? Can't hear you.
Unmute, Kim.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Loud and clear.
Okay. Yeah, that's the way it goes. And then when we try to collect, we go through the clerk of court, as I understand it, from staff. Yeah.
So if we write a parking ticket and they don't pay it, it's attached to their tag, and if they get pulled over somewhere for speeding, it's?
No, I don't believe that's the case, because it's not a moving violation. It's just a parking ticket. I can verify that I'm correct at the next meeting, but I don't believe that if they get pulled over, they would necessarily have any of their parking tickets show. I'm really not sure. I can get back to you on that.
Mr. Braden? The parking citations do go through the Sheriff's Office. They're turned over to the clerk's office. If they're not paid, they are forwarded to a debt collection agency from there. There is no, since it's not a moving violation, there's no way of it showing up to be able to do anything when you make a traffic stop on them. It will show up in the system that they were issued a parking citation, but there's no way for us to take any action on them on a traffic stop.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Dr. Ramswell, I have you up. Are you good?
So how does this fit in with towing? Because I know we've discussed in the past having a roving tow truck. How, how do these two fit together? Are we not doing the towing of cars? Or are we?
We are doing the towing of cars where there is a sign that authorizes the towing of cars, but the citation for parking can be done anywhere.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So here we are. We have a, we had a motion, then we had a substitute motion to, Ray, you wanna read it, the substitute motion, just so I'm correct here?
Why don't you give me an opportunity to modify that substitute?
I will gladly do so, sir.
I will do that. We're gonna incorporate the staggered amounts that we all thought was probably a good idea into that substitute. So we will go with, of course, they can still have the option to do a warning, and then we'll go.
50, 75, 100?
Sounds good.
All right. There you go. You got it, Ray?
If my second will agree to that, then we'll go.
If the second will agree.
I agree. Second.
So.
That wasn't me, but do we need to add the what happens after the 100 part to this motion?
I don't think at this point we can.
No, I think that's really up to the court. Or can you, in the ordinance, does it specify that if it's, it's your third violation after that, we're gonna do a notice of violation, Kim, or you may mention?
We can put that into the ordinance. This is going to come back for another first reading anyway due to the changes. So if you want to put that in as well, we can. It's going to be advertised regardless.
All right. Mr. Destin, would you like to include that? After three strikes, you're out. We're gonna put a lien on your property?
Well, so just to be clear, it's not actually going to put a lien on the property. If a notice of violation is issued, at that point, a lot of statutes take over that process. There's some due process that would go to the violator. They'd have to have a public hearing before the special magistrate be put through that process. But ultimately, once they go through that process, if they don't pay the fines, then the city could put a lien on it. I just wanted to be clear.
And according to the Sheriff's Office, they, the Sheriff's Office has a, they just pass it on to a collection agency. They don't go to the depths that we're talking here. Could we do the same thing instead of the public hearing and all that? Is that allowable under Florida statute for municipalities? Is, once you get that third strike after that, and you haven't paid, we're just gonna turn it over to a collection agency? Or do you recommend we go the other route?
It's going to go that route with the sheriff anyway, so adding our route with the notice of violation gives us additional teeth. So if you want to give it additional teeth, I think it is advisable to put in after the third time, we can, we can go through that route.
Well, I'll look to the motion maker to see if he wants to add that or not, because we didn't.
Well, at this point, since this is first reading, I'd like to give Ms. Kopp the opportunity to look at this issue with a little more detail and bring it back to us. So I would just leave it at the graduated fines and.
All right.
What's in the motion?
Okay. You heard that, Kim? Right now, we're just gonna look at the graduated fine thing in the ordinance, bring it back for another first reading. So I have a motion. I have a second. Seeing no further discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote. Eyes have it. The vote is unanimous, so moved, and we'll bring this back for another first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to clarify that with the land judge's attorney, if we're going back to first reading, because it doesn't affect.
Yeah, we made, we made too many changes.
Okay, because it doesn't affect the title at all, so.
We are going to go back to first reading, Ray. These are substantial changes.
Okay. It doesn't affect the title?
Yep.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Kim. Mr. Bowman.
Next up is item 5D. This is a quasi judicial hearing. This is the Oaks at Old Town Major Development Order, DO 2104, and major subdivision 1919 SP and 2031 MS. The applicant is requesting a major development order and major subdivision plat approval. Project is located at 140 Cybert Avenue. Property is 1.59 acres and will consist of 19 long-term residential townhome units, the common pool, along with associated infrastructure and plating. This time, if I could get any of the applicant's team who plans on testifying to stand up and raise their right hand, as well as any city staff members who plan on testifying, raise their right hand, and any members of the public who plan on testifying to stand up and raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide is the truth? All right. Thank you very much. At this time, council, have any of you guys had any ex parte communications on this matter? Seeing none, I will go ahead and turn this over to Ms. Kopp.
This will be presented by staff. Mr. Zenguzi, who I believe is in the room.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As City Engineer, I mean, City Attorney stated, we have a project before you, the Oaks. It is a major development and a major subdivision located in ROI VR. Upon the finish of the technical review, upon completion of the technical review, staff has determined that the applications meet or exceed the requirements of the Land Development Code for major developments and a major subdivision. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Any council members have any questions?
I just had one question. I noticed, when I went down and looked at it, it's, I mean, it's like just south of the library. There's, there's a house there, I guess, next to the library, and then there's this, I guess, this wooded parcel there, which I guess is your, your property. And then next to that, on the south side of that, is that another property, for lack of a better word, another house. Is the development gonna be for that, for that whole property? In other words, those, those structures will be taken down and, and all be rebuilt? Or is your development gonna be in the middle of those two, those two properties?
I mean, sir, could you, could you press the red button?
Mr. Shepherd, press a red button, give your name, address.
Tim Shepherd, 72 Indian Bayou Drive. I'm an authorized agent for the owner of the property. The, the parcel that we're proposing to develop is, I believe there's actually two parcels between it and the library. And, and the, if you look at, on the public record, at, at the aerial maps, it does show there's some dilapidated buildings on there. But this owner bought the property in March of 2019. There were no dilapidated buildings on there at that time, and there hasn't been any clearing or any, anything removed. So it is a vacant property right now. Yeah, but that property is not part of the proposed, 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 that, that property's, yeah, that property's not part of the proposed development. Yeah, that's not part of the development. Yes, sir.
Mr. Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff assures us that this meets the code, and it appears that it does. But this goes back to the problem we were discussing earlier during the public testimony. We're putting right at the very top 12 units on a acre. This is gonna be 19 or an acre and a half. You look around there, you won't see anything that's that dense. If we continue to do these things, we're going to just completely overrun our capacities to have roads and, and all the other infrastructures. And in addition to that, you know, the problem is we're still laboring under the multimodal transportation. So this, this project provides, I think, two parking spaces per unit. And I don't know how many bedrooms, if, how many bedrooms, as Ms. Ramswell asked last time, do these units contain? As a, is there a rule, they're the same, they're different? Okay, so.
Can you come to the mic?
Yep.
Ross Binkley, address is 434 Benning Drive, Destin. I'm the engineer of record, and there are, there are three bedroom units proposed.
There are. So if, if they are used like they may well be used and rented like they probably will be in order to make money, parking's way short. And until we fix this, every project that we approve, approve now is gonna make our problems bigger. So while it, it appears these folks meet the code, and it would be hard pressed to say no, we need to expeditiously get down to trying to fix these problems, and later in the meeting, I'll try to make a motion to direct the staff to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Destin. Mr. Braden, I had you, and I bleeped you off the screen. You still have a, wanna comment?
Yes, thanks, sir. This will be for the staff. Is this the parking issue? Is this, is this problem that we're having, is it, does it lie in the LDC? Because you mentioned that this is in, in compliance with the LDC, but it's, it's out of date, and it's not in.
Yes, it is an LDC issue, and if you recall, as part of my discussion about the update, that's one issue that we really must take a look at and address. In addition to the fact that we have, now have a much more robust, comprehensive plan as far as the density areas are concerned, we do need to revisit all the density calculations that we have in all those districts that are currently in the city. And so that work is currently underway, and I'll be coming shortly, the start of the year, with products for you to consider.
Yeah, that, I mean, I'm just, I guess, I don't know if we should have had to put a moratorium on, you know, developments or something, so we can get the, the comp plan and LDC up to speed. I know we, we got the comp plan approved, and I was harping on it that, you know, hopefully we get the, the LDC, you know, work on that and get that up to speed, but everybody kept saying, no, we couldn't even touch it till the comp plan was approved and passed and all that. And now we're lagging behind on that. You know, maybe not lagging behind, but anyway, yes, it just seems like, you know, in a couple months, that there's no way shape, form, or fashion to a project like this would even come close to being approved by the new LDC. But that's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Ramswell. And then I'm gonna encourage the council, if they have any direct questions to the developers themselves about this plan, that this will be the time to do it as well. Go ahead, Dr. Ramswell.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff, could you address compatibility and how this project blends in with the surrounding lots? Because looking at an overview of an aerial of surrounding properties, as Mr. Destin brought up, it looks completely out of sorts.
Yes, the issue of compatibility does not apply in this case, because it is a permitted use and meets the requirements that are currently in our code today. That is in contrast to the project that you looked at last time, which had a requirement for you to look at compatibility, because it was a conditional use. This is not one, and therefore, it's different.
Understood. Thank you.
I believe there's townhomes to the south there, two or three different locations on that same side of the road already, and.
But that many?
Uh huh. I don't, no, they're, they're smaller. Yeah, that whole area, though, there's quite a few properties that are, sorry, disrepair or situations. So, you know, we're almost handcuffed to source of what Mr. Destin brought up. Kim, do you have any comments to make as far as compatibility and/or the process in following the LDC at this point?
I think Mr. Zenguzi explained the analysis that staff used, and it is the, actually, it is the applicant's burden to establish that for the council, though, not staff. So if you have questions and the applicant is present, they may want to address that as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Schmidt, I mean, Ms. Abear, and then Kevin, I have you next.
I see that you have reforstation for trees required 16, and replacement trees 32. What kind of trees do you, are you removing and bringing in?
Yeah, it might be a good job for you to come up and show us these drawings, please. That's all right. Describe it. We'll close our eyes. We'll close our eyes.
See the demo plan. I mean, we're taking out quite a few trees. And we have the sizes indicated on the demo plan. There was nothing.
I was just looking at the landscaping.
The landscaping plan? No, that's all right. See, I have notes on the plan, in the plan. Basically, I'm given the option.
I've driven by the property, too, and it just looks like there's a lot of those popcorn kind of trees up in there, which are not like, you know, the preserve type trees. But I was just curious, it said you're going to put replacement trees in of 32. I was just curious what type of trees you were going to be putting into the landscape.
Yeah, I'm not identifying the tree, the species that's required, I mean, that were supposed to be planted, but I am referencing the code that there are.
If staff may, if staff may interject.
Bail you out. Go ahead, ma'am.
For clarity, our code requirements are to establish a two and a half diameter, non-invasive, non-invasive tree species. So 32, two and a half diameter, non-invasive, non-invasive species are required, being live oak, crepe myrtle, I don't, crepe myrtle is one, but mainly magnolia, live oak, things of that nature are permitted, no invasives at a two and a half diameter.
Would you like to hold up the plat drawing anyways, just, just, just for us to take a look?
And just so we're clear, the applicant's still going to have an opportunity to make his presentation. We're still technically in staff's presentation right now, so.
I don't really have much to add to the presentation. I can show you the, I can show you the drawings. I thought they might be on the screen.
Is there going to be enough room for vehicles to park in that driveway and not block a sidewalk?
In the road?
No, if there's vehicles parked in the driveway.
Oh, in the driveway, yes. Well, we, the driveway depth is, is a parking space depth. Staff requires that the driveway meet. There's also parking, there are garages, too, so they'll be.
Where would the sidewalk be?
The sidewalk is along the edge of the road on both sides. So the, the depth of the driveway does not include the sidewalk.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. King.
Is this, are they, I can't tell from here, is it tandem parking in line with the garage?
Yes. One, one space in the, in the garage and one space in the driveway.
Okay. And are these, and this may, I may have missed this, but are these, are y'all going to be, are y'all, is the developer planning to keep these or sell them individuals, or?
Sell them.
He's going to sell them.
Also, Kevin, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Just some education, if y'all don't mind helping me. The multimodal transportation that Mr. Destin was talking about, the two-car requirement, I think that's what you were saying. So does that mean that you can only have two cars at one of these parcels, one of these properties? And if so, what happens when you have more than two cars?
It sets a maximum amount of parking that you can have rather than a minimum. And because we were going into the multimodal transportation element, we reduced the parking at that time so that we could force people into the public parking structures that we never built. And so we're snowballing. And tandem parking is, the code allows for tandem parking. I was told down on the harbor that we were not allowed to have tandem parking.
So I guess what happens at these properties if there's more than two cars? Is that, I mean, is that okay, the question to ask? Is that, are they only allowed to have two cars per townhome?
From a residential, single-family development, then yes, it's one, it's one space. That's why you have the two and a half. To answer Mr. Destin's response or question regarding the tandem parking down along the harbor, that's a commercial district. So when you're factoring in commercial uses, tandem parking is not permitted currently under our current LDC. But with, with single-family, two is the typical parking ratio that you have. Then again, we have another parking requirement for short-term rentals. So whenever short-term rentals come online, it's that one space per bedroom. So then we review those types of properties for that requirement. But when a single-family or a multifamily project comes online, the standard minimum is two spaces.
So what's the maximum?
The, the maximum would be, I guess, you know, whatever the site can handle with meeting, you know, your common boundary buffer, in addition to your open space requirements and site design requirements, so.
So it wasn't a maximum of two cars, then?
Correct.
I guess that was, I was confused about. I was hearing that you could only, you could have a maximum of two cars on these properties.
It's a. Yes, the code requires a maximum.
A what?
Per the MMTD.
It requires a maximum?
Yes. MMTD requires a maximum, and then we work from there.
Which is?
The maximum is, the maximum is determined based upon the project.
So how, what's the maximum amount of cars at this project?
I guess that, that's where Mr. Destin was trying to explain earlier, is that we have an MMTD standard currently. The MMTD, it creates a maximum threshold. So essentially, MMTD is multimodal, right? So you're not wanting to encourage people to drive around the city. You want to encourage people to walk, bike, other modes of transportation. That said, under the MMTD requirement, you have to set that maximum threshold. Therefore, any development can't, you don't want to hit that max in relation to the MMTD, right? Because you want to encourage other forms of multimodal. Unfortunately, we're in a situation where we have an MMTD, but we don't have the correct or the proper multimodal to support what our element, essentially. So when you have developments that are within, within the multimodal, you always see that max. And then we obviously encourage the developer to go underneath the max, because that's going against the MMTD. So it's, it's getting me confused.
So forgive me, please, but is, so is there not a maximum on this development? Am I just completely confused and struggling here, understanding?
There's a maximum, excuse me, and I don't want to take your expertise away, but there's a maximum number of spaces that they can have. Not a maximum number of cars. You can buy 18 cars. I don't know where you're going to park them, but you can only have two spaces. And that's where our problem is. The old system, we had a minimum amount of parking that you had to provide depending on a number of formulas. And if we can't build the garages and put in the shuttles and put all the other elements of multimodal in that make the whole system work, then to go forward with multimodal parking requirements is a really bad idea.
And that's not their fault, because they're following, they're following the rules by providing two parking spaces, which is their maximum.
I just had one other, one other question on that point, when I was requesting there. The other one is, over the past four years, with the comp plan being adjusted, or LDC being the adjustment over the past council, was there changes to the density whenever the comp plans were adjusted over the past four years? They were lowered?
We've lowered the density, I believe.
So it was lowered quite a bit?
So, so we did lower in the comp plan, but we need to then lower that in the LDC. And that's the work we're about to undertake now.
All right.
Thank you.
So this is the staff end of it. Do you have a formal presentation that you would like to make, or you're pretty much?
I can, if you'd like me to, but I don't have anything prepared, but I could go through the project.
That's all right. I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine. I could go through it.
Mayor, just so you know, we do in our packet, ironically, I found it, it's on page 227, it is the plan.
Yes.
The next page also has the trees, which, coming out and what's going in.
Okay.
And then the last page is the overview of where those spots are, which I was trying to figure out, if you've got 12 units but 38 parking spaces, you've got two per unit, then you've got your parking for guests, so.
Well, what, yeah, and I could just show you, too, the site data table over here, if you have a site plan. It explains that the parking requirement was two and a half spaces per unit required, but with the MMTD, it was a 20% reduction. So you can see it right there. That's why we end up with two. That's what it says, that was the rule.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, is you, you're following the rules, so you, there's nothing you haven't done incorrectly. So this is on us to fix ASAP.
We can't do that tonight, unfortunately. We have other decision to make. All right, so where are we going now, call?
If, if the applicant's done, staff's done, which sounds like both are, we just need public comment, public testimony, if there's no other questions for staff or the applicant at this time.
Mr. Braden?
Are these two-story or three-story?
It says two-story in our packet.
And they're 25 feet wide and 48 feet long? That's a three, that's a three-bedroom?
Yeah, it's a three-bedroom. Tiny.
Pretty small.
To Steve's comment.
It's Kevin Schmidt.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I've been saying that since you, the time you were running.
That's permissible, that's permissible when it's almost nine. Go ahead, sir.
We've had businesses downtown Destin that was developed and had to take away parking because they had too much. So we do have, because of this multimodal thing, yeah, you know, we have a parking problem in, in Destin, but they had too many, and we had to take them, take them, take some away before they get their CO. So that's, that's a big issue. So we, we got to get on it.
I think we're done with this guy, though. I mean, he's.
You can have a seat, and I'm going to open up the public hearing portion of it, and then we'll entertain a motion, and we'll go from there, all right? And in the course of our motion, if there's any further discussion or any questions, we can always invite our folks back up here to make any comments, so.
You want me to make the motion, Mayor?
Not yet. I got to do the, it's a public hearing, so let me open up the public hearing portion of this proceeding. Is there anyone that want to make any comments to this particular development? Do you have anybody, James?
No, sir.
Nope. Ray. All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion at this time, and we can have any further discussion thereafter, or hopefully we can go to a votes.
I'll make that motion, Mayor. I move city council approve with conditions the Oaks at Old Town, a major development order and major subdivision.
Just to clarify, I think you're, you're intending to approve unless you have particular conditions you want to apply to.
Just approve, yeah. No conditions on this.
You're not asking for any conditions?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Well, I'll give it a second, just for discussion.
All right, thank you very much. Now, we've had quite a bit of discussion, but I will open it up at this time before we vote for any further comments or discussions. Seeing none, we will go to a vote. Six-one, eyes have it, so move. Mr. Bellman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have another quasi-judicial hearing. This is item 5E, the Summerfell Major Development Order, DO 2105, and major subdivision 2011 SP and 2030 MS. Blue Developments LLC is requesting a planned unit development and major subdivision plat approval. The project is located at the southeastern corner of the Legion Drive and Benning intersection. The property is approximately 1.65 acres and will consist of three single-family and eight long-term residential duplex units, along with the associated infrastructure and plating. And again, if I could have any member of the applicant's team, any member of city staff, and any member of the public who wishes to make public testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Tracy, are you? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide is the truth? All right, thank you very much. And city council, have you guys had any ex parte communications on this matter? Seeing none, Ms. Kopp, I'll turn it over to you again.
Okay, first, I'd just like to enter the agenda item and staff report into the record in its entirety as Exhibit A, and then I will turn this over to staff to introduce.
Applicant, you have no objection to the staff report being entered into the record? Seeing none, the staff report is in the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. As our city attorney said, we have another project here before you. Blue Development is requesting a planned unit development and major subdivision plat approval. This project is split-zoned, so you have part of the parcel located in LDR, and you have another part of the parcel located in MDRV. In addition, the applicant is requesting a PUD deviation to allow the existing four-foot walk sidewalk along Legion to remain currently. Staff's comment is, there is a complete four-foot pedestrian network currently in that location. Therefore, the request does not pose any negative risk to public health or safety. In addition, the applicant is providing the 10-foot sidewalk requirement along Benning per the MMTD standards. And with that, I will, upon the technical review, staff has determined that this project also, and applications meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the Land Development Code. And with that, I will open it up for discussion.
All right, this is the staff presentation portion of it, so I will look to the council members. Do you have any questions and/or comments to staff on this particular project?
This project, oh.
Go ahead, ma'am. Hey, Dr. Ramswell.
So this project was going to be partially located where if we had gone forward with the four-lane connector, it would have cut it off. Is that correct? That this was essentially saved by us not going forward with the four-lane? That is correct. Okay.
Mr. Destin.
This is a planned unit development. For those of us that are new, can you explain to us what the difference is? Planned unit developments, I think, get to waiver or get variances on a number of development requirements, one of them being the sidewalk that you're referring to?
Yes, council member. Planned unit development typically based on, what, three major criterias? One, public safety. If a, if a standard is seen to be counterproductive to public safety, that's a reason to deviate from it. The other issue that you take a look at is environmental concerns. There might be in that particular area, say, that sensitive areas could be wetlands or things of that nature, that would be up for consideration. And then the last aspect is flexibility in terms of design, meets of uses that comes into play. So typically, those are the three major issues that you use in plan development review process.
So they're asking for a waiver on the sidewalk from what would be required is, what, 10 feet?
Correct.
Down to four feet that's there, and which seems reasonable, however, if any of the people along that road redevelop, rebuild, tore down their house and put a new one in, what sidewalk would they have to put in?
The prevailing conditions at that time, when that work is undertaken.
So is that a 10-foot or a 4-foot?
So they have to do it today, it'll be 10, 10 feet wide.
Okay, which seems a little unfair, but I, you know, putting a 10-foot in where all, where the 4-foot are doesn't make a lot of sense either, so it's one of those conundrums, I guess.
It might be something when, as we go through our visioning for our city, we can require 10-foot for everybody after the fact, or do it ourselves, so. Because I'd like to see a lot wider sidewalks in other areas of the community as well, so. Yeah, it would look a little out of sorts.
Yeah, we live so long.
Yes. Just keep drinking water.
That's all I had, thanks.
All right, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to look at these designs, and I'm not sure if the gentleman, you're doing this one as well, but is this the time to ask the question, like, what is in front of the duplexes on this parcel? Like, on the design, it looks just like a big empty space. Are those future duplexes going to be built? Or am I just not understanding how to read? I'm not an architect, so.
In front of the duplexes?
Just, you know, parallel.
There's draw driveways?
You have three, you have three single home families, and you have four sets of duplexes.
Right.
And then it says 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, .15 acres on each one of those things. Is that just green space?
Are you, are you referring to?
No.
Oh, this to the rear?
All that, yeah, that whole section.
We're leaving that alone. We're not, we're only clearing to put in the sewer services to these.
So they're just, the trees are just standing trees?
It's going to stay vacant, that's right.
So could that be developed in the future on this particular property? Or is that a? So, could that be developed in the future on this particular property, or is that a separate development order?
Well, it's, this is being platted, so once this plat is created, then this, this lot, I don't believe can be further developed.
So, I guess, staff, could they develop more duplexes across from the four duplexes? Like, how, how would they go do that if they wanted to?
I mean, I, I can't speak to any hypothetical until we see a plan. You know, I don't know how to answer that question.
I guess not the hypothetical, I guess just from me not understanding the procedural, this process, since I'm so new still, but we have a development order right now to build three single-families and four sets of duplexes on that parcel. If a year from now, they wanted to build four more, what's the process for them to build four more? I guess, would that be the better question?
Yeah, well, first of all, though, to amend the current plan, and then we have to look at access issues and the whole range of things that need to be considered.
So, they would come back to us with, maybe not a year from now, maybe six years from now, he wants to clear those trees and put four more duplexes over there. How does that work? I mean, is it...
Well, whatever, yeah, whatever timeline there is, we have to go through the entire review process.
Correct.
I just wanna make a comment on that, is that, one thing is, this property, we did not fully utilize the density allowed in this plan. On the portion where we're putting the duplexes, that actually, if we would've wanted by the code, if we'd've wanted to got, you know, different orientation, figured those, you know, we could've got two more units. So, you know, we, we voluntarily dropped the two units because it just didn't make sense. I mean, this is a, this gives a nice, these are smaller townhomes, they're about fifteen-hundred-and-fifty square foot, gives a nice product. The, the answer to your question on, what if we wanna build four more duplexes? Well, the density doesn't allow that. But the density would only allow two more units at the current density. But then, secondly, once this is platted, once this plat's approved, there is no access to this property on, on the back side. And the, the access point to get in from the other side actually falls another forty or fifty foot to the south of this property. And, you know, to, to kind of expand on a point, only the southern fifty-nine foot of this property, really probably the southern twenty-nine foot, was rescued by moving the four, from the four-lane. But, but really, that didn't have anything to do with it, because we'd already worked with the engineers, and, and they had a big retention slated there, and they were able to reduce the size of the retention even with the four, with the four-lane, so...
That makes sense, and now that I, because I don't know how to read these very well, and I'm starting to learn, now I see that you couldn't even get back there?
That's right.
I guess that's...
I was gonna bring that up.
But I, I appreciate the, from Main Street? Oh, Anna Street. I got you. I just, I'm just trying to, you know, one of the goals that I, I wanna do by serving this community is not to be able to vote for something that I don't fully, I wanna make sure I understand that five years from now, you couldn't come put two more duplexes based upon what we're voting on tonight. I just kinda wanna cover myself for that, basically.
I'd also make the point legally, too. I believe, once this is platted in this configuration, and Mr. Shepherd sells any of these, these lots, they're gonna be lots. He sells any of them, in order to amend the plat, he would have to go back, all these owners would have to sign off on it, and it would come back through the city. I mean, it would be, it's not an easy process.
Ms. King? I mean, Mr. Destin?
I just had one more question, and that'll be for the land use attorney. When you go through the PUD process, it's kinda like, let's make a deal. You waive a lot of requirements so that the city gets something in return. Is it possible, Ms. Copp, that in return for the PUD process that we are going through and giving the, the variances on, that we could ask that no further construction on this site be part of the PUD negotiation?
Yes. You can put that...
No objection? Okay. Well, then, we'll put that in the caveat as we approve. So, I'll make a motion to approve this project with that stipulation?
Second.
All right, I got a motion, a second. I got a couple more folks lined up, so don't go away. Ms. Abear, and then Mr. King?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed in your notes here, it says no site lighting is proposed. We've been talking about lighting and how dangerous it is in some of the areas of Destin. We definitely need to get Gulf Power back on, in line. So, what exactly does that mean? You've got this little area that you're not gonna put any sort of streetlights to light up your property?
Well, well, we're not proposing any streets, so that's usually when site lighting is required by the city, when we, when we were putting in a new street. So, I'm not sure, I mean, I live on Benning, I know there's a streetlight right outside my bedroom window, for sure.
I mean, I'm just, at the property itself, I mean, you're gonna have, like, internal posts that, you know, light it up.
Actually, there are...
I didn't see any pegged in the drawing.
On the utility plan, where was, no, I'm sorry. There you go. On the, on the landscape plan, the city does have requirements for trees and pedestrian scaled lighting along the sidewalk, so we're showing that on Benning. That's the only lighting we're proposing, but as far as streetlights, we're not proposing anything on Benning or Legion.
You good?
I'm good.
Sorry, Teresa, I thought you were done. Lastly, Ms. Ramswell?
Thank you. So, just a question. In looking at the map and the plat, is there not an ingress egress on that southern border of the property and another one coming off Anna? So, it's possible then in the future that that could be used as an access road?
I think that's further south. I think what you're talking, the right-of-way? Yes, it's fur, it's further south. It's, there's a, there's a lot, there's a piece of vacant property here between us and that right-of-way.
Let me just add, so if you look, if you look at, and I'll have a map with me, but Anna comes in off Beach, off Beach Drive, and it comes back down to the townhomes, you know, kinda due, due west, and it turns back to the north. I've, I've had extensive conversations with Joe Bodie on, on the status of Anna Street, and Anna Street is a, is a public street until it basically turns back north, and then it becomes private with, just with those townhomes. So, the public part is the east-west portion, and it terminates about, about thirty feet south of, of this property. I mean, you know, one of the things that I really evaluated here was, if I could've gotten an access in from Anna, if we could've gotten access, we'd probably have a couple more townhomes here, because it would've made the, and maybe some of the other ones would have accessed differently, because it would've made it, it, it easier. But there is no other access to this, to this property.
I was just curious, because looking at the county property appraisers area, it appears as if there is over off Anna, a dirt road to the west of the existing roadway that extends all the way until it connects over in here, but it looks like there's a building right across the property lines that extends up to Legion. So, anyway, I'm just looking at that in terms of the potential for future development.
You're talking about the building coming off of Legion from the first house to the east?
To your east, yes, there's a...
That's an encroachment?
Yes.
That's an encroachment from that house? And what you're seeing is kinda some parallax error from the, from the satellite imagery. It's not absolutely perpendicular, so that, that, that area doesn't accurately represent where the property line is, is anyway.
But if it's encroached, then this line, I mean, and we don't need to, that's not relevant to this, but the point being, it does look like in the future, you could possibly be able...
Well, if you, if you look, I've got, I think I have an accurate line here of where the Anna Street right-of-way is, ends, and there's a gap. I don't think we can get, get there from here. I don't think we can get onto Anna Street.
But you don't plan to build at this time on the nor, or the eastern portion there of your lots, correct? So, you could use that portion as a driveway?
We could, no, there is no access from there onto the property. That's a private, everything that adjacent to us in a private road, it belongs to those townhomes. If you look at those townhomes to the east, they were planted in a couple of different, in a couple of different stages. The one, the ones to the north, huh?
Yeah, come to my question.
The, the, the townhomes to the north, that, their roadway, their ingress egress, it's on the plat. It's private, and, and, you know, again, I had a conversation with Joe Bodie, I can't, cannot, that is not legal access to the property I own. The portion of the Anna that runs east to west, that is a city, that is a city road, but unfortunately, as his drawings show, it terminates, you know, thirty feet, a hundred feet, something south of my property. It does not connect. There is no, I mean, this is something that we, we investigated ad nauseam, because we, we'd look at different things, and, and, and it was kinda conflicting, but when you get the deeds, you get the, the plat, it does not, it absolutely, you know, from the surveyors, it does not connect.
And, and we're, we're gonna make a, we have a motion in a second, and we're gonna vote on what's being presented as drawn.
And we've agreed, we've agreed not to develop that portion.
There you go.
You know, anyway, so...
We're good.
Yeah.
We're good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, go ahead.
Couple things, Gary. Yeah, I just wanna note for the record that the applicant is agreeable to the condition that has been proposed at this time as part of this recommended motion, or part of this motion for Mr. Destin. Second, I just wanna ensure that there's nothing further from the applicant or staff at this time. You guys all good? You want, you wanna make a presentation? Go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, I know, we, we're, you know, we, we're doing this as a planned unit development, and the only variance we are asking for is the Legion sidewalk widening, and I want you to understand, we're not trying to get away with anything. The, the way the code is written, the, the sidewalk width and the road widths and all this, right-of-way widths are dictated by the classification of the road. And Legion is, has a certain classification. You go to the table, and the code says the minimum right-of-way is, it's over seventy feet wide. Legion is a fifty-foot right-of-way, okay? So, Legion is substandard according to your own code. So, in order to put a ten-foot sidewalk in there, I think we may have barely enough room, and it would be right off the back of curb, and we would have no stormwater, okay? So, we're kinda, we were kind of in a catch-twenty in a pickle. That's right. So, this is why we're, we, plus, it really, you know, it would make sense to have this section of ten feet, and then the rest of Legion, four, I mean, it... So, I want, just wanted you to understand that. We're not trying to pull anything over.
I understand it, and, and I think that it's a good concession. If we wanted to give you a hard time, we would say no on that, and you would indeed be in a pickle.
I know, but you're about to vote, you know, that's what it is.
So, we're, we're not doing that. All we're asking is...
Leading my case.
You guys have agreed that we're not gonna put any other units on there, and that's good enough.
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second?
We need, we need public comment testimony real quick.
Oh, I thought I already did that.
Let's just, let's just open it up again, just to be sure, I'm not, I don't recall.
I did.
Did you?
Did I? Right, I asked you, right, if you had anybody queued up? No?
We don't have anybody at this time.
We'll reset, it's late. This is a public hearing, and thusly, I will open up for public comment. Is there anybody in the room that has, wants to make any public comment? Seeing none? How about you, James?
No, sir.
How about you, Ray? All right. Hey, man, dot our i's, cross our t's, right, Kyle?
Better safe than sorry.
You've got it. I'm a rookie at this anyways. All right. So, we have a motion, we have a second. We've had a robust discussion, presentation, so at this time, we will now take this to a vote. Vote is unanimous, so moved. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And up next, item six, consent agenda, items A through E. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion to approve.
Quick question. If you don't mind? Quick question on this?
No.
Thank you. Just, I, I know this will be really quick, but Kevin, let's just poll the item that you wanna discuss.
It's called a consent agenda.
Okay.
So, if you don't have consent, then we need to pull it prior to the meeting.
Quick question?
Probably, I'm starting. No, I'm just busting your job.
If you got a question on any item, let's just poll that item, and then we'll vote on the ones that are not...
Just pull it?
Yeah, just pull it.
Okay.
That'd be, yeah.
So, I'd like to pull this item?
C?
So, the, the motion then is gonna be to approve A, B, D, and E is the motion maker. Okay with that? Okay. And the second?
Sorry.
You're, you're fine, Kevin.
Okay. I got a motion to approve A, B, D, and E. I have a second. Take it to a vote. Hold it, there you go. Vote is unanimous, so moved. Six C was polled, Deserby Street, Calhoun Avenue, pedestrian improvements, phase one authorization to the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract. Sir, you have the floor.
Appreciate it. There's the, the Jay Miller Construction bid that came through. Just two silly questions, maybe one silly question. Is it normal to have Bermuda sod, St. Augustine sod, and Centipede sod all installed, like, on a project? Is there, is there reasons to have three separate types of sod installed, like, on our roadways, or is that, like, city right-of-way? It's not expensive. I just was curious, like, twenty, thirty thousand dollars of sod, but there's three different types of sod, which, when I do, like, a house, I just put one type of sod. I just didn't know if there's a specific reason. I apologize for throwing you on the, on the line today.
That is a perfectly reasonable question, and since we're talking about multimodal a lot tonight, this is a multimodal-type project. That was the, the bid list that we provided to the, anyone that wanted to submit a proposal on this job, included all three types. The motion that's listed at the bottom of this agenda item allows the city manager latitude to negotiate, and that is exactly the type of issue that we would talk to the contractor about, about uniformity in turf.
In other words, they have the option during the bid process, in their bid, to say, we are going, this company's gonna provide Bermuda. Another company may say, for this amount of money, we'll provide St. Augustine. Is that basically how that works?
They could've bid it all, St. Augustine, all Centipede, all Bermuda, all Zoysia, whatever they wanted to do. We just gave them that latitude based on their judgment, best practices. But we can certainly talk to them if we would like a uniform sod, if it's Zoysia or whatever, based on staff recommendations, we can move forward with any turf material with this contractor. In addition, it also gives us the latitude to make a few adjustments. This was actually the second advertisement of this bid item, and they submitted a bid the first time, but they were the only bidder, so we just wanted to talk to them about a few of their prices.
I think what curious minds wanna know is, why would you use three different types of sod? I think is what it all boils down to. Rodney, you do a lot of that kinda, so is there a particular reason why? Could it be location, or amount of shade, or that kinda stuff?
Yeah, but I don't think that a contractor would put three different types out there. He would just, he, he's gonna buy just one, he's gonna buy Centipede, but my recommendation would be to steer away from St. Augustine. And that's what I have in my yard, and if you don't fertilize it, but, you know, bud killer and all that in it, every month, it, it dies, and it's hard to keep. It's good for, you know, shady areas, but so is the Zoysia. I'd even, I'd just take that off the list altogether, St. Augustine. Bermuda's tough, and it's what, you know, they put on the side of the road, but that's my concern.
Thanks, sir. And next is Ms. Abear.
Thank you, Mayor. I was pretty much on the same line of what Rodney was just saying. Mr. Braden, we, we have St. Augustine, and it's terrible. I mean, if we have a way to move these guys to something that's gonna be sturdy, then, you know, that would be my recommendation, but thank you for letting us know.
Oh, yeah, we were, we were definitely focused on a low-maintenance-type turf material, but on the bid sheet that we advertised, it had the opportunity for them to make suggestions based on their professional judgment.
Also gave the opportunity for a lot of questions.
Just three.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Does anyone else have any other things, so we can go ahead and get this approved? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
There is a recommended motion, if you just read it.
Anyone? Skip, you have it? Oh, yeah, Skip, Skip's not gonna bail me out here. He's always ready with the recommended...
I'll make a motion, the city manager be authorized to execute a contract with Jay Miller Construction for the construction of the Zerby Street, Calhoun Avenue Pedestrian Improvements, consistent with the scope of work identified in RFB 2014 PS, in an amount not to exceed six-hundred-thirty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars.
Thank you, sir, I have a motion. And I have multiple seconds, so seeing no further discussion? Let's vote. Man, it's nine o'clock. Eyes have it so moved. Okay. Item seven. And we will start. I'll let Mr. Smith have a little time, and I'll start with you, Mr. Braden.
Thank you. Uh, can we get a update on Airport Road Curve? Where we at with that?
Yes, sir. I emailed with Jimmy Smith. He's the project manager with Seterus. The plans are currently in the construction office at District Three.
They give you, give us a start date on that at all?
He did not offer one. That's all the information I have at this time.
Okay. How about the stop signs on Main Street and Kelly? Were you anywhere with that? Stop signs at Main Street and Kelly?
The traffic study that was gonna be.
Yes. So, hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have a full report for you and recommendations.
Who's, uh, what engineer, what group we doing, is doing the study or whatever for the stop signs?
Oh, Dewberry.
Excuse me?
Dewberry.
Dewberry, who's Dewberry?
It's an engineering firm.
Touche. Um, okay, thank you. And the, where are we at with the complaint process? There was a motion made on that one?
Yeah, that's with our labor attorney right now. He was adding those whistleblower elements. Um, we can, we can see where he's at. That was about, uh, Webb Lansing, help me, maybe three weeks ago we last talked to him. I'm not sure.
So, we don't have any idea of when that might?
I'll email Mr. Larkin tomorrow and send an email to council and let you guys know what he says.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the Christmas lights on ninety-eight, um, I really appreciate the effort on that, but if it's me, I'd take them down. And we're already getting emails and complaints about how pitiful it looks and, uh, I don't know. It just, I mean, like I said, told the City Manager, it's a start, and I really appreciate that. We need to do something, but, um, I just need to wait myself until we can really do something nice. Um, the, we're, do we have any updates on the landscape redesign for ninety-eight? Where we standing with that?
Not at this time. I can reach out to Dusty and Pam tomorrow.
Yeah, if you can just give a sheet to council, an update on that as well, and if you can, just kind of mention the ninety-eight redesign. Um, if they have any idea where, where they are in that process, that would be awesome. Um, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Dr. Ramswell.
Thanks. I just wanted to share with everyone that the Dustin High School project is moving forward at a very rapid pace right now. Um, we are under contract. We were going to close by the end of December, but, um, with the finance company that we have, they want all the permits in place before they actually close the contract. So, um, really, that's, at this point, probably more of a formality. In fact, we really feel strongly it is. Um, the closing now will probably be in January, early to late January. The county has agreed to issue the bonds for the project, which is phenomenal news. We have hired a principal, and we are full steam ahead. So, just wanted to share that with everybody. Um, we have a press release coming out today or tomorrow, or, well, tomorrow or the next day, that'll elaborate a bit more than I did here tonight. But we're all very excited, and things are progressing rapidly. So, good news.
So, are you allowed to say what the location is, or?
Yeah, the location is the former Grace Lutheran Church, next door to the former Y and Mattie Kelly on Commons, yes.
Wait, that's awesome. Good. We hadn't heard some, anything for a while, so that's great news.
Yeah, we've had so much going on, but we didn't want to spill beans, and we wanted to make sure things were definite before we actually made further announcements, because we were, everybody was disappointed that the other location didn't work out, and COVID and everything kind of set things back. But we are on track now. Everything looks great.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment, that not, not four years ago, maybe five years ago, that seated council, majority of them, thought that that was not even heard of, would never happen, wouldn't even know, no need to even talk about it, nothing, just like underground.
Ever since I've been mayor, we've been a hundred percent, this council's, myself been a hundred percent behind it.
Five, six years ago.
So, now we're finally seeing some fruition come.
It was like undergrounding, wasn't even used, talking about it. That would never happen in the city of Dustin, and it's coming.
And with some support from the school board as well.
Absolutely. School board was a critical element. I mean, they had to approve our charter and the contract, which they did. Mr. Dustin was, um, a wonderful member that helped promote this cause, and the whole school board voted unanimously. So, it, it's been a wonderful coming together of ideas and wishes and dreams, and we are really seeing it become a reality. It's wonderful. Yeah.
Is that it? All right, Mr. Dustin. Thank you for that. Great news, man.
Congratulations on the school. Um, I don't know if most of you are aware, we had another near fatal interaction between a bicycle and a car on Calhoun a couple weeks ago. And I've gotten a number of people that have called me or concerned about the speed between, uh, Newport and Clement Taylor. Lot of, lot of speeding going on there, and they have asked that I bring it to the council for solutions, and I will turn it over to , uh, City Manager. Speed bumps, uh, I don't know what else we can do to slow it down. It's already thirty-five.
We could call the Sheriff's Department and ask for some increased enforcement, correct?
We could do that, and it'll last for a while, but, you know, a permanent solution might be speed bumps. I know that we talked about speed bumps over on Kelly and Main. What's, are we even looking at that? Is that part of the report we're gonna get?
Michael, did you want to touch on that at all?
Are we talking about Kelly and Main or Calhoun?
Kelly and Main, and then we, that might be a solution to Calhoun. So, if, if we can implement it in Kelly and Main, it bodes ill for Calhoun. So, tell me what's going on in.
We can certainly take a look at that. We have our new city engineer sitting right here.
All right.
We can certainly take a look at that.
I would, I would ask that y'all look at it. I can make a motion if you need that. I'll move that we ask the City Manager to direct the engineers to look at the speed bumps on Calhoun, and if we haven't, it's Main and Kelly also there.
Second.
They just, I'd just love to hear an alternative. Yep.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second that.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Let's go ahead. Eyes have it so moved.
And the only other subject I want to talk about, and I'll try to do it briefly, is, as we have gone through this meeting tonight, we've recognized the problems we have with multimodal and some of the other things. So, I would, I would ask or make a motion to direct the City Manager to give with staff and come up with some solutions with us, for us, and to do it on a priority basis, because each one of these things we approve, it doesn't have adequate parking and a number of other short problems, is not doing a service to the city. And I will put that in the form of a motion also.
Let's go ahead. We'll, we'll go ahead and do a motion and, you know, open it for comment, because I want to add something to that. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. What I'd like to see, uh, the staff do in that process is, uh, maybe by hearing our discussions, prioritize some of the thing, the most pressing needs of the code, redevelopment, or rewriting of our code. I know, Lewis, you have some in your planning department and stuff like that, but when it comes to parking, multimodal, those are really high on the list.
And the intent of my motion is to prioritize those right now.
So, so if you could give us a prioritized list, then, when it comes back to us, then we could maybe reprioritize it once we get to see it.
Well, with that, and we need a timeframe. And I know that with our present situation with staff and COVID, and all of those things, that things are not working as fast as we would like. But sixty days, and then, and if we don't have anything, then we'll tighten it down a little bit more. Is that doable, Lewis?
Yeah, sixty days, we can come up with at least some concepts for you to take a look at. Yeah.
All right. I'll make that part of the motion.
All right. You okay with that, with the second? Yep. Okay, all right. So, we have a motion, uh, and a second. Ray's got the motion down, and staff's got the direction that this motion proclaims. So, we'll go ahead and vote on it at this time. Eyes have it so moved. Thank you, sir. Mr. Overdare.
Okay, so, I hope I don't get portrayed as the Grinch who stole Christmas and that, or, or maybe worse than that, maybe like Ebenezer Scrooge or something. But, you know, you know.
You should have dressed up in a green outfit.
You know, every day we get, we get our updates from Pat Maddox and, and from Catherine on this, this COVID issue, that what's going on, and, and what the, the illnesses are that we have, and the positivity rate and all that. And it's, and it's definitely south of where it's supposed to be. I mean, we're supposed to be down around five, and we're up around twenty or twenty-five. And so, so, so there's definitely, there's an issue going on. Um, you know, Niceville, they canceled their Christmas parade. Um, Navarre, they're not having a parade. They're, they're still having their boat parade, but a boat parade and a street parade are, are certainly two different things. Um, Crestview, they did their parade, but the thing that Crestview did, and, and I don't think that we could even do it here, but in Crestview, they took whatever their length of their parade was, say it was two, two miles, they increased it to four miles. So, people had, there was more room for those, the same amount of people. So, they could, they could social distance, they could do all the things that the CDC recommends, and they could, they could do this, this parade more safely. Um, I talked to some of the folks on the Okaloosa County Board of County Commissioners, and I, I kind of got a mixed, um, emotions from them. Some are just, they don't care one way or the other. It doesn't matter whether we have a parade or whether we don't have a parade. All the way to the point of, of some of them are very adamant that, that there should never be anything during this, uh, emergency or crisis that we have right now, that we should have a parade, um, anywhere. Um, when we, when we talked with Lisa this morning, and I've talked with her later on this afternoon, the number of parade participants that we normally have is about a hundred. We're, we're down right now to around thirty. The number of volunteers that, that she typically has is around twenty. Right now, she has seven volunteers. Um, you know, to my way of thinking, and this, this is just me talking, so, and if you don't agree with me, that's okay. But to my way of thinking, one of the primary reasons that we're here on the city council is to provide for the health and the safety and the security of the citizens of Dustin. And I think that having this parade is not meeting those needs. And so, for that reason, I just think that we should not have this parade during this, what's going on with us right now. And that's, that's all I have to say about it. If, if you'd like me to make a motion and see if there's a second, I'll do that. Or if, if anybody else wants to have a discussion, we can have a discussion.
Since you were one of the yay votes at the last meeting, I think you can rescind and call for a new vote.
Well, so I'll make the motion that we cancel the Christmas parade for this year.
I second that.
I'm gonna open this up for discussion.
A motion to reconsider would be proper since the other one passed. And if we, most of them reconsider passes, then we make another motion to cancel it as a way to do it correctly under Robert's.
Yeah, since, since we're technically in a different session, we can do it this way, or we can do it the motion to reconsider route. Typically, you do only do a motion reconsider if it's the same legislative session. So, so, but, but we can do it either way, really.
I think in the interest of the meeting, we'll just do this new motion and have our discussion and vote on it. If you don't, it's legal under Robert's rules.
Well, I would, I would disagree with that interpretation most likely, because Robert's rule I've read said two weeks, or at the next meeting, a motion to reconsider is proper, but I don't care. We'll go with the meeting.
I don't either.
We'll stick with the motion.
I'll make whatever motion is legal, but.
Yeah, I, I, we got a motion. Let's just, let's, let's press on.
A little bit of discussion then?
Yes, that's what we're, we're doing now. We got a motion, we got a second, and Kevin Smith. Nope, I kicked the wrong person. But go ahead, Ken.
Sure. Uh, well, I mean, I'll start, kick this off, since I've voted to have it. Um, I understand everything that Skip's saying, and I know this is a fragile time for a lot. Health and, health and safety, health and well-being of our citizens is, it's up to interpretation of a lot of things, including the mental health of our citizens. And a lot of them that want to get outside to celebrate Christmas with the parade is, you know, is an important thing. Um, less participants, I mean, there could be positives and advantages of having less participants now this coming year. Um, less volunteers, I mean, it's unfortunate, but I know we have the Sheriff's Department in some capacity out there on the parade. I don't know exactly what they do. Do they do anything? Is Sheriff's, Sheriff's Department just on the south side of ninety-eight, just controlling that? Or do they do anything with the parade itself?
Sheriff's Department is going to control, um, the roads, and they will, are not participating in the parade, as they usually do.
So, what are the volunteers that you're looking for to help?
Volunteers, uh, the Rotary Club is the crowd, um, control, all the way down. We usually have about two, twenty of them that, you know, just help keep the kids, you know, not in the middle of the street. And then we have about ten or so, um, throwing candy out at the end of the parade.
Well, I mean, uh, I'm sure if we need more volunteers, if we continue to have the parade after tonight, we could try to put a call out to different organizations that we know of. And if we need volunteers, I'm sure we could probably find some. But, um, you know, I, I just, you know, I, I, I think that this is a big thing that we need to have, and we're giving people the choice to come outside and participate or not. They really don't have to come if they don't want to come, at the end of the day, in my opinion. And, um, I think we would have more participants if we didn't delay the announcement of it, to be honest. If we would have had it scheduled as is, it probably would have been more than thirty participants. And Fort Walton's having theirs right now as we speak, so other cities are doing it.
Ms. Abear.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, at this time, because we have had a lot of people dropping out that don't want to be part of it because their anxiety is high, we've got volunteers, and I've worked with Lisa in the past. You get twenty, thirty people volunteering for something, now you're down to seven. You know, and now you gotta go out, and you gotta try and struggle to get more people to volunteer to help, you know, keep people sprayed, spread out on the streets. Everyone wants to be at these events because it's exciting and it's fun, but they're still, right now, there's, people are just, their anxiety is high, and, and people are not sure if they want to be around people, because they want to be around their grandparents for Christmas. And so, I'm kind of, I'm kind of on the fence, you know. I'm just, at this point, I'm, you know, I know we all need something exciting and something fun to do, but I just feel like we're, we're kind of like being counterproductive on the safety side of what we should do for our citizens. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've had one nay on the parade, um, multiple yays. Let's, let's have it. I even contacted Lisa today at lunch, because I kept getting people calling, you know, I want to know if we have a parade, I want to know if we have a parade, you know, um, wanting to do it. So, um, and my next question would be to Lisa, what's your recommendation? Can you pull it off? Can you pull it off safely? Do you have the personnel, city staff? Do we have enough? Do you think we have enough people? Is thirty enough to have a parade?
Well, I mean, you could have a parade with thirty. We know that's a third of what we usually have. Um, I mean, we're, we're ready to go, so it really needs to be your decision.
What, what, let me ask you this. What does the parade consist of? Is it taxi cabs and garbage trucks and, but, I mean, what, what kind of parade are we having?
Right. Now, we do have the bands, um, Fort Walton Band, Dustin Middle School Band, um, we have our Grand Marshall, um, we have Legendary, um, Couple Queens, the Model, the Car Clubs are coming, um, yeah, CrossFit. I mean, there are other Dustin Council, um,
Is Santa Claus coming?
Santa Claus is coming. Yeah.
All right.
Fire Department is not in the parade either. I, I'm sorry. They are being in the, they are in the back, yes. Usually, the Fire Department's in the front also, with the sheriff and the Coast Guard and all those entities, but they are not participating in the parade. But yes, I'm sorry, the fire, uh, hook and ladder will be at the back with Santa. Yeah.
All right, my turn. Uh, I just saw a big report where the Secretary of HHS just was on the news today, stating he doesn't understand why all these states are closing outside dining, because the science says outside dining is A-OK. Uh, so I would assume that if you can outside dine, that you could outside parade watch as well. So, on the science side, uh, I, I believe, especially if you're having a smaller parade with less participants, and probably less people coming to the parade, that, um, we would be. participants and probably less people coming to the parade, that we would be in pretty good shape. A small parade is better than no parade in my mind, and, but it also may actually be good, like I said, because it allows for more social distancing groups outside of their own family unit. Maybe we could just not throw candy to help facilitate the mad scramble and violation of social distancing rules, but still have the parade. And the last thing is, we still live in America, and people can make their own mind up what's best for themselves and their family, and if we hold a parade that we've supported initially, but yet that, that family member or the people decide not to come because they're uneasy, well, that's a decision they make, and that's A-OK. They're not going to come to the parade, but for all the people that would like to go to the parade, like Kevin and his family, and mine, then, then we can have the parade. My family plans to attend, because we're going to be in it. So those are just my thoughts on it. I really feel like there's no doubt that Okaloosa County has a uptick in cases of COVID-19, but I don't think, as in other places in the country, that it's from outside activities. Most of it is, we're entering the winter months, people are starting to stay more at home, they're, they're staying closer together, and that's, and this uptick was expected, and we were told we were going to have it, because it's also flu season. So I just think, I understand the concerns about safety, but I kind of think that our citizens can make up their mind, we provide them a parade, the ones that want to come will come, and I'm sure they'll keep safety in mind, and the ones that don't, won't, but I'm in support of a parade. Ms. Ramswell.
Thanks. Well, I voted no last time, and it was for all the reasons that we've heard tonight. Ms. Abear brought several of those up, and I did want to shed light on the fact that last night, I believe, or night before, was our drive-through meet Santa thing that I heard people just loved. I wish we'd had more time to try to make that a bigger event, because that sounds like something that, you know, maybe could have taken the place of the parade and still get the festive atmosphere, but that's neither here nor there. I will say that my concern was not necessarily for the participants in the parade, but all the little kids and the families and everybody all clustered together trying to grab the candy as we throw it, that was where I was thinking, because people walking in a parade can distance as they walk, and, you know, if you're in a cart with your family members, you're around them at home, but that was sort of my thought, but I, I'm in favor of canceling it, I wish there was something we could do, maybe a new, something New Year's that, building on the drive-through idea, I know it's not the same, but everybody's all, I know the kids are all joking about, we're, when the New Year comes, we're all going to say Jumanji at the same time, and it's going to whisk us to a better year, and so it's kind of, New Year has become sort of a better thing to get us all out of 2020. So just a thought, maybe we could plan something around New Year's Eve, but we'd have to be doing it kind of quickly here, but anyway, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, my last comment before I go to Mr. Smith, and then we'll go to a vote, is that Tommy Browning, one of the most historic charter captains in the fleet, is supposed to be our Grand Marshal, and I would not, I would really not like to deny him that opportunity. He's a high-risk factor guy, so I'm sure him and his family will keep that in consideration as the Grand Marshal of the parade, but, you know, when you start getting at a certain age, Christmas 2021 may not always be guaranteed, so that's just another little issue with, with me. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Just two quick points, just like Mr. Braden, unlike Mr. Braden, though, I've received all positive feedback, emails and messages, and I have, I have yet personally to receive any emails or contacts from our constituents against this parade. I'm not saying that's the majority, but, you know, I mean, personally, that's all I've received. And secondly, the 30 people that are participating, even if half of them, I mean, it's a cost thing, too, if we cancel it now, I mean, there's, there's things that they're spending money on to, to design and get out there five days from now, and, you know, money, and if the school district's going to allow the schools to march in, I mean, and they're pretty strict on their rules right now, if they're going to allow them to march in the parade, I mean, it's, it's another positive thing for all of us, so I guess we can vote on it.
All right, let's go ahead and take this to a vote, so we got a couple more council members, and then we'll go home. Take a vote. Motion is to cancel the parade. If it fails, we're going to have a parade.
Yeah, just want to make sure, so if we don't like that motion, we vote no, right? I just want to be clear on that. Okay, I mean, Johnny's asking the same question, I just was man enough to press the button at.
I tell you, but your vote is locked. Tracy.
I can't undo it.
Hold it, hold it, Webb's going to save you, just tell, tell him what your vote is. All right, the vote is four to three, no, the motion fails, and we are having a parade in 2020, Saturday.
Lisa, I'd like to help with volunteers, if you could remind me, we can try to get some more volunteers.
All right. Skip, anything else? That was all that Mr. Overdier had?
I don't hear anything.
Hey, it's all right to lose every now and then. Man, I put off a hunting trip to make sure I was at this parade, because we have a dead parade.
Excuse me, Mayor.
I didn't say that, because my wife didn't know I was planning on doing that.
I just want to make sure we're all okay with the candy, because that is not going to be an easy, I know Sam, I've already talked to Santa, and he has already made all his little toys to give out, so if you guys are thinking we are not throwing candy, that is going to be something very different than I need to try to.
No, I don't, no, we'll throw candy.
I got $300 worth of candy, I'm throwing it.
Mr. Braden is, Mr. Braden made a point two years ago that we would not run out of candy by the time the end of the parade, so we, we did, we're throwing candy. All right, so, up next, Johnny, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I'm no, I'm no physician or anything, but like, does it, does it behoove us to wear gloves? And, I mean, I laugh at the people wearing masks outside, but to give people peace of mind, does that, does it behoove us to do those things?
To each his own, I think, is the best way to handle it, make your own decisions based on CDC recommendations. What, what would you like, Angela, I see you have.
Angela, yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, I would take that as a compliment. Your daughter is utmost beautiful, go ahead, Lisa.
I know our staff will be wearing masks and shields, just to, you know, so all of our staff, and we have them for our volunteers. So I guess you guys, you, we have them for you if that's what you want to do.
Right. The mayor's not wearing a mask, but I wear gloves to throw candy out to make people feel better, but I'm going to be walking out in the middle of the street outside on a sunny day. By the way, the weather forecast is really good, so, all right, that's a done deal. On to Ms. Abear. Go ahead, Ms. Abear.
Well, first of all, to talk to Rodney's point about the lights on 98, I did talk to Michael Burgess earlier this evening about the reason why our lights look so pitiful on 98 is because we don't have a lot of receptacles to plug in for electricity. I said, can we run some extension cords from like one point to the other? And he explained that we just didn't have the capability to do that, so I'd had people ask me about that, so that's the reason publicly why we do not have a beautiful 98, you know, lit up, but Main Street looks pretty sharp, I'm real happy, I live on Main Street and have to drive down it. Secondly, I want to commend Lisa and her team for the Santa drive-through, a lighting of the tree. I had so many people calling and texting and saying how awesome that was, their kids loved it, that was a great plan, great idea, we really appreciate what you do with that. And other than that, let's have the parade, don't come if you feel scared and you're worried about it, but for the little people that need something fun to look forward to, we're going to throw you some candy.
Mr. Destin, when we're negotiating that undergrounding, Christmas light receptacles might have to be in the contract. Damn right, thank you, sir, just make note of that. All right.
I had a, just a follow-up, I know we had been talking with Gulf Power for quite some time about them allowing us to put things on their poles, like banners, decorations, and specifically for Christmas, and my understanding was that they did eventually say, yes, you could. So did we just not plan to do that this year? Michael, or whomever is?
I was unaware that they allowed for that. I've always been told kind of the contrary.
I could have sworn at some meeting somebody told us that they had agreed to do it.
We can follow up with Gulf Power, certainly for next year, as we start the planning process the day after Christmas, that we'll, we'll confirm that with them. And in addition, I'll mention to Dusty and Pam, Counselor Braden, tomorrow, if in that landscape improvement, if we can't throw a few plugs in there.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. K, oh, Ms. Abear, Councilman King.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilman Smith.
Yes, Ms. Abear took my thunder as well, but I, the Christmas drive-through was amazing, so, I mean, you could keep doing it and build on it, it was awesome, I mean, there was even like snow flying and all sorts of stuff, so it was beautiful. Only other thing, sir, is, and we even have the gentleman that's still here four hours into it, which is amazing, so I really appreciate it, but I'd like to follow up on the lighting on Harbor 98. I know that there's, there was a study account from, there was a count being done over the past year, and I've heard a little bit about it, but we haven't, it's been a while, but could you share like what is being done, and then what, what it's looking like moving forward for lighting 98?
Certainly, the gentleman showed up at our, came to our Public Works and Safety Committee back in March of 2020 and relayed those same concerns that he did tonight. We've, every quarter have had one of our staff members go out either at night or really early in the morning, depends on if it's daylight savings time or standard time, and it takes about three or four days to ride the whole city, and he documents every pole, every light that's out. The, I can't remember the number from the first time, but I know the second time it was 110 citywide that were out, and then the last time, I believe it was somewhere right around 70 or 75. He documents all that, we bring it back into the office, and we go into that portal that he mentioned, Gulf Power Street outage portal, and we, we report all those to Gulf Power. And if you'll indulge me for a minute, this is something that we put together, can you hit R? Yeah, there we go.
Michael, I'm sorry, does anybody follow up on that once it's put into that portal that these lights are out?
Yeah, we check up on that thing periodically. When you report one is being out, it goes from a green icon to a red icon. If there's a problem with the pole or the light, it'll either turn orange or yellow, saying that there's, it's not an easy fix, but eventually they'll turn all green, and for Counselor Menchel, he would bring that up periodically, and we would kind of give him a breakout of, first it was 110, then it was 80, and then it was 60, and then it was 40, and so they, they eventually do get all fixed, all get fixed. But this is from Gulf Power, and in our GIS, we have established a digital database of all of our streets, streetlights, let's see if I can do this from the mouse, but we can fly down Harbor Boulevard, and all these things are streetlights, now not all of them are city streetlights, some of them are in parking lots, are on private property, but this is in their inventory, and you can go in and click one of these, like I said, this one right here.
This is the Gulf Power website, right, where you click on?
No, 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 this is something that our GIS manager created.
Our new system.
Can you announce that website so the public will know?
Well, this is actually a Google Earth file called a KMZ that we use internally, but we also do have this information in the regular GIS, where almost, it has been an arduous process, but we are almost 100% on our streetlight inventory. We have been working out little discrepancies here and there with Gulf Power's street lighting coordinator, I guess that's her position, but who pays the bill, what type of light it is, we've been, we've been working with her for six months trying to get this right, but finally, we, we're almost at the point where we have a finished product, it's pretty much 100% correct. But on this inventory right here, you see I clicked that little dot right there, and you can see that this is a 250-watt high-pressure sodium light, puts out 25,000 lumens, it's a Cobra head style light, if you go up, so this is Benning Drive, you can click on that one, okay, that's a 200-watt high-pressure sodium, so this is a very extensive inventory. Now, the gentleman mentioned earlier, and I'll go ahead and say it because we'll have viewers at home, but if you have, if you notice a street light's out, and you don't feel comfortable getting online and reporting it through the Gulf Power portal, it's really easy, but feel free to use the city help desk at cityofdestin.com, you report it to us, we report several of these each week. Soon as we get the request in, we immediately report it to Gulf Power.
And when do they come do something about it?
Whenever they come do something about it, it's, it varies drastically. We've had, we got one report today that they've, it was the fourth report of this light, and I reported it again today, I sent a copy of that screenshot, and they promised me that they would be out there tomorrow to repair it.
804 Mar Street, add that one.
Is that just for Gulf Power lights, or is that city lights, too? Who, who does the city Gulf Power? The city-owned lights.
Okay, the city, the city has about 1,450 streetlights in its inventory, the only ones that we actually own and we maintain are the ones right outside on Commons Drive. The rest of them, we, part of the monthly service that we pay for Gulf Power is part of, is maintenance. So if you see, it, now, you know, it kind of falls into that whole homeland security thing, if you see something, say something, if you notice something, a street light's out, or a stop sign's down, feel free to call the city, we will be out there as soon as we can.
Can we hold their maintenance fee hostage and tell them the maintenance has been dilapidated for the last year?
I'll have to talk to our finance director about that one.
Mayor, if, if the council would like, in the old franchise agreement, there was a section that allowed us to audit our streetlights. Last time we did it, which was about 20 years ago, they had to give us close to $100,000 for streetlights that didn't work. I would be glad to discuss that with Gulf Power representative to see if we can get some.
Boy, that would make Mr. Menchel happy, wouldn't it?
Well, didn't, I thought he, didn't he bring that up like two or three years ago?
Steve, I hope you're watching, we're onto something.
I believe he brought that up two or three years ago, and there was a, like, $60,000 or something we were due, and it was also the same time when he'd found almost, God, I want to say almost a million dollars worth, does that sound right? Of, in Crestview.
Just last of all, there's a lot of green, like, they're like all green, is that the case? That means they're, they're all working on 98?
This is, this is the Google Earth KMZ file, they're all green, this is, this has nothing to do with their status, it's just, the green kind of pops against the aerial, and Counselor Destin, we are in that process as well. This, that was, part of this whole exercise is to make sure that we're paying for what we're paying for, that, that it's our responsibility, and we're not paying for what we're not supposed to be paying for.
Well, I'm, I'm sure they would like to make them right, I'll talk to them, I've got probably 15 on my properties, and six of them are working, so, and there's a new light out now that's, that's brighter and better, and we can talk to them about some of those, too.
Well, you were given the authority to do just that today.
I'll certainly talk to them, see, that's still in the franchise, it's no longer in effect.
Just, last thing, Mr. Mayor, if you'll mind, I'm sorry, I know this is, so, do we, when, when you submit it to Gulf Power's little website, you said, is, no, you know, it's, hit or take, how long it takes them to come out and fix it, do we track when we, when we submit it, and then when we resubmit it or anything like that? Is there internal tracking for something like that?
Sorry, we receive an email for each individual one we, we submit.
So we would know, like, we, okay.
What do I do? Okay, hang on one second, I'm sorry to belabor this meeting like this.
So am I.
Streetlight safety is very important, a lot of people.
Okay, this is, this is Gulf Power's portal.
Yeah, this is great.
Report a streetlight outage, and if you go over here to Stallman. So the green ones are in operational condition, these two are out, these have been reported as out, and if you click it, you see the, the light type, and we are aware of the problem with this light. So eventually, it'll go from red back to green once it's repaired.
Thanks, sir.
Awesome. Is that it? Land use attorney, ma'am.
Hi, I do have one quick item that I'd like to get some direction. Hi, I do have one quick item that I'd like to get some direction from the council on. The city of Bridenton Beach is going to take up with the legislature, proposing changes to the law on derelict vessels and try to lobby for some stronger protections against derelict vessels. I don't know all of the details of exactly what they want to propose yet, because I wanted to get council direction before I responded to the city of Bridenton Beach's attorney, but if you're interested, I can gather the information and bring it back at another council meeting for you to look at and digest.
Absolutely, in my opinion. And Mr. Destin shaking his head, yes, we, we, we understand the maritime law and the difficulties that both the state, Coast Guard, and a city like ours has dealing with derelict vessels, so if they've come up, if they have found the magic bullet to deal with it, we'd sure like to hear about it.
Okay, I will reach back out to that attorney then, and I will come back at the next meeting with additional information.
Everybody here on the council agreeable to that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, there you go. Mr. Bowman.
All right, really quick, let me get through this real quick. I'm requesting that you all schedule an executive session pursuant to Section 286.0118, full statutes in the case of Carolyn L. Borland v. City of Destin, Florida et al., case number 2019 CA 002769 in the Circuit Court of the First Judicial Circuit and in for Okaloosa County. I'm requesting that it be held at 5:30 PM on December 21st, which is 30 minutes before our regular session that day. The executive session will be recorded by a certified court reporter, and transcript shall be made part of the public record upon the conclusion of the litigation. Participants in the executive session will be council members Kevin Schmidt, Johnny King, Teresa Abar, Skip Overdyer, Dewey Destin, Purple Ramswell, Rodney Braden, Mayor Gary Jarvis, City Manager Lance Johnson, City Attorney Kyle Bowman, City Land Use Attorney Kimberly Romano-Cop, and the city's litigation attorneys Eric Krebs and Bill Warner. Have a recommended motion on there, if somebody would be so kind as to make it.
I'll entertain that motion at this time. Almost a motion in of itself, wasn't it, Kyle?
Yeah, statute's got a lot of requirements there.
Can, can we just use that as the motion?
Make the motion as expressed by our attorney.
That'll be fine.
I'll just have a second. Any further discussion? The vote is unanimous, so moved. Mr. Bowman, you have anything else?
Nothing further, Mayor.
All right, before we can leave, our last part is public comment. Come on up, Marcy, I think you're the only one here. No, there are a few other folks. So you can start off our final public comment, and I will look to our IT folks and Ray before we close it. Go ahead.
Marcy Bell, 3 Gulf Breeze Court. To clarify my comment during Item 5A earlier tonight, I was talking about the map that wasn't passed earlier where we weren't allowing golf carts, golf carts. Thank you. It is late. Down Airport Road and such, so that's why I was questioning how those little vehicles were getting here, because we didn't pass that to allow them to come down Main Street or use Airport Road. Thank you. And I just wanted to, I'm not sure, I don't think anybody here was on that call, but there was a call with National Park Service back in November, two virtual public meetings in reference to Crab Island. Anybody else participate in that other than myself?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know which one you participated in, I participated in the first one.
Oh, the, the.
Okay, so, it's my understanding from that, that come March, they're going to make a decision on whether commercial activity will be allowed out at Crab Island within, at all. With that, my concern is that we've been talking about the Finger Jetty section of, out there, for the sand going in that you just talked about earlier tonight. So if they get moved off of Crab Island, where are they going to go? Are they going to start coming into that area where some of them already are? Or Noriega, well, Noriega's not allowed for commercial.
No.
Right, but if you go back to the Finger Jetty section that I'm talking about, correct. So they'll probably try to come in over there. Some of them are already there, and I have witnessed for the past few years where they back in on us when we're in the water, they throw anchor lines at us, I reported this before here at council. So I just want to make the council aware of, when they're moved and not allowed to be there this coming season, where they're all going to go, and what kind of a safety issue that may set up for us there.
Yeah, those, those barns can't stay in the current.
So that's, that's not going to be an issue, it's just a smaller, the, the little drive-around guys will be the ones that may move over there, but the bouncy game and, and the restaurants, they're not going to be able to.
Right, but with all of our parallel parking that we have and them coming out there, it's just heads up for when I come back this summer, and I'm like, hey, guys, thanks.
You got it. Anyone else?
So at our next meeting.
All right.
No, sir.
None of there, Ray, nothing? Rodney's already beat me to it. Meeting adjourned.